Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Brad Hanna is the state champion, uh, state chaplain of the Oklahoma National Guard. He'll lead us in the invocation. And afterwards, I'll ask Councilman McAtee if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would everybody please stand?
Let's pray. Lord, this is the day that you have made, and we rejoice and are glad in it. We're thankful for those who have gathered here today to take care of the needs and, Lord, to plan for the future of this great city. A city that continues to increasingly be a light not only to this state, but to the rest of our nation. And we pray, Lord, that the best days of this city would still be ahead. We pray today for those who are before us, for our mayor, our city manager, our council, and our staff, and those who work so diligently to take care of the details that come in and out when we think about all that needs to be done for a city such as Oklahoma City and its size and its people. We pray, Lord, that you would give them wisdom. We know it's not easy because there, anytime a decision is made, we know that there is someone who's always ready to criticize. But that's why we need leaders. Leaders who are firm in their commitments and, um, and, Lord, who are willing to stand in the gap on behalf of those that they represent. And so we do pray, Lord, for wisdom. We pray for your grace, for your strength, and your blessings on these who are here, on this business, and on this city. And we pray these things in your holy name. Amen.
Page the flag. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start presentations this morning with a special opportunity to bring in the supporters of the Oklahoma School of Science and Math. Pam, you want to bring your group forward? Let's bring everybody up that came in. Julie, bring in up the presentation. Uh huh. Are you the spokesperson?
I'm the spokesperson.
Okay, come on up.
So I get to read the proclamation.
All right.
I'll wait till everyone gets up here.
This is Julie Hall.
Should I introduce everybody or just?
Yeah. You go ahead.
Right. I am Julie Hall. I am current chairman of the Foundation for the Oklahoma School of Science and Mathematics. Dr. Frank Wong is the current president, head of our school. Lance Benham is my vice chair of the Foundation. Mark Lester is our treasurer. Dr. Edna Manning is our founding president at the school. Jerry Berger is the past chairman of the Foundation, and Pam Plackton is our director of development. Now, I will read what they prepared for me. In recognition and appreciation of the city of Oklahoma City for supporting rigorous academic challenge and achievement for Oklahoma students talented in math and science through the Oklahoma School of Science and Mathematics. Whereas the city of Oklahoma City provided invaluable investment and partnership that was critical to establishing OSSM in 1990, offered three potential sites for OSSM, assisted negotiations with the Oklahoma City Urban Renewal Authority, purchased Lincoln School and leased to OSSM very affordably for a period before deeding it outright to OSSM, pledged up to $2 million in in-kind service support to complete the land package, clean up the site, and make infrastructure changes, acquired an additional half-block of land for the school at 10th Street and Walnut, cleaned up the entire site, raising the old Ebenezer Church and various existing structures and old foundations, rezoned the property and helped with filing of a PUD, relocated OGE transmission line and buried it, closed stiles where it crossed the OSSM site, removing the street and planting sod, made storm drainage improvements, vacated city street easements crossing the proposed OSSM campus, rerouted sanitary sewer service to the site, removed and/or repaired existing curbs and sidewalks, drew up and filed all deeds. Later facilitated a HUD grant sought by Senator Don Nichols for construction of the school's gymnasium and whereas the city of Oklahoma City partnership has helped establish OSSM as a nationally recognized superior educational resource for qualified Oklahoma high school students and a strong economic generator for our city and state. OSSM has graduated 22 classes of students from all 77 Oklahoma counties. Of 1,346 graduates to date, half of whom are still completing their education, 85% of graduates are choosing technical or scientific career fields including more than 300 practicing engineers, more than 100 have earned MD degrees, a dozen have earned DO degrees, a dozen have earned Farm D, DDS, and DMV degrees, more than 60 have earned PhD degrees, and more than 30 have earned JD degrees. More than half attended college in-state, and many of those who attended college out of state are returning to Oklahoma to establish their careers and raise their families. OSSM alumni as a whole are showing strong connection to each other, to OSSM and to Oklahoma. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Oklahoma School of Science and Mathematics Foundation thank the city of Oklahoma City for its leadership, investment, and encouragement for enduring positive change that has helped raise the bar of education for Oklahoma, for helping to challenge Oklahoma's best and brightest students to develop their math and science talents to the fullest extent in high school and beyond, and for the benefits of the OSSM and city of Oklahoma City partnership will achieve for a brighter future for the people of Oklahoma City and our entire state for generations to come.
Let's show our appreciation. Thank you very much. Obviously, we're very proud of the faculty and staff and the board of directors and the students who are now making a very large difference in our, in our city. So thank you all for coming down. We very much appreciate this. I know Councilwoman Sauer is on the board. Meg?
If I could, I was going to say, I have the privilege of serving on the board of the School of Science and Math Foundation and just truly want to echo, I'd like to first thank Pete White, because Pete, I think you had an awful lot to do with the founding of the school when you served on the council last time. And it truly is one of the greatest gems that we have in our state. Um, I think it's really important to remember that we have students from all 77 counties. We have urban kids and we have rural kids that come to study there. Most of them stay in the state. They're creating businesses. And when we talk about Oklahoma City as the greatest place, one of the greatest places in the country to start a new business, these are the kids that are doing it. Um, I also would just like to comment that when the announcement was made that the GE Research Facility was coming to Oklahoma City, one of the reasons they specifically cited was the pipeline of brilliant students coming from the School of Science and Math that would be available for internships and later to work at the facility. So it's an amazing connection. It's an economic driver, and we need to do everything we can to support it.
That's great.
Ward seven, right?
It isn't ward seven. Pete, tell us about those early days.
Well, I, one thing, one thing I want to say that, yeah, it's not on me.
But it's on.
The, I was kind of the point person for the, in the location committee that located the facility here in Oklahoma City. And it was a serious competition. Senator Bernice Sheddrick was the point person for Stillwater, and that was the real competition. And anyone that doesn't know Bernice and doesn't realize what a competition that might have been would understand the difficulties that. I, I would hope that everyone in their, that serves on this council will have an opportunity to do something like locating the School of Science and Mathematics in Oklahoma City as I, as I was involved in that, to look back on their career as, as a legislator. Because I, it is just a shining star in Oklahoma City, and it's one of the things I've been most proud of for the times I've been on the council. Wasn't an easy thing to do, but it obviously was the right thing to do. The selection of, of placing it in Ward Seven wasn't an easy thing to do, but it was obviously the right location. Um, it's just, it's something of, it's a, it's a fond memory for me, and I certainly appreciate all that's been accomplished since it's been here. Especially Dr. Manning. I just, it's good to see you again. Been a long time.
And I would think through the years, whatever detractors might have originated have, their, their concerns have been met. And I'm, I know my expectations by the school have largely been exceeded. So thank you all very much for what you're doing. Let's show our appreciation one more time. Wonderful leadership coming out of that committee. Now I'll call up Mike McCullough. Mike is the guy that puts on the Oklahoma City Holiday River Parade, and each year we ask Mike to bring in and show us who not only survived the trek down the Oklahoma River, but who won the awards. Mike, I'll just hand it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, I like to thank the city of Oklahoma City because you are one of the major sponsors of the parade. And one of the things we're the most proud of about the parade is it is a free family holiday event, and it's probably the largest Christmas free family holiday event in Oklahoma City, maybe even in the state of Oklahoma. We had another great crowd this past year, even though we went against the Thunder game, but we still had a great crowd down in the river again this year. And we have about 20 to 25 entries each year. And I think the thing about this, Mayor, is the people that enter these boats decorate it and do all that on their dime and at their time, their expense. And it's always just a great family event down the Oklahoma River. So to move along and to respect the mayor and council's time, we will quickly hand out the awards. And I will start with family, if I may. Second place in civic nonprofit is Allied Arts and being represented by Deborah McCullough Center. Second place civic nonprofit.
Congratulations. Appreciation to everyone.
And then, and then first place, and she is one of my favorite sisters, first place civic nonprofit, The Salvation Army. Janine South, Megan Dunn, and then the owner of the boat, Tom Wood. And Tom, Tom's done this every year, and Tom, we appreciate you being involved with the Christmas parade. Salvation Army. In the small business category, second place goes to the Courtney Kilman family. Yes. And then in first place, small business individual goes to the Greer family. This is their first year to participate, so the Greer family. And then in corporate government, in second place, we had a, a boat full of Native American dancers from the Chickasaw Nation. So the Chickasaw Nation, and this is Jess Lindsay, Jesse Lindsay and Haley Taylor, who drove up from South Oklahoma this morning to be with us this morning, Mayor. And that was the Chickasaw Nation's first time to have an entry. They, they have been a major sponsor of the event in the past also. And in first place, government corporate is our own Oklahoma City Public Works Department. So we'll bring them up. Come on up, guys. Now, these are also the guys that help keep the river clean and prepare the river for the parade, and they always do a great job for us every year. And of course, the Christmas parade, people say, why don't you do it in July when it's warm? Well, it's just not the same, you know? You got to do it in December. So they're out there working when it's cold, and so they know I appreciate them. And, and we'll keep them up there, Mayor, for the next award, because they actually had two boats in the parade this year. And the second award is the chairman's award. So let's present the chairman's award. Now, the chairman's award is the Spirit Award, and the reason Public Works is getting the chairman's award this year is the second boat they had entered didn't quite make it down the river. So I thought they deserved the Spirit Award. Thank you, guys. And then the Grand Marshals Award goes to another first-time recipient, although Mr. Delisi's been our judge for many years, but the Oklahoma City Arts Council is the Grand Marshals Award. And then our final award is the mayor's award, and it goes to a family that's been participating for a number of years. It's the Kyle family, was best parade, and they had a nativity scene, and the judges picked it as, as the best of the parade. So the Kyle family. Again, we wish to thank, thank you, Bob. Take your bow and go home. Mayor, again, we like to thank the support we get from the city on this event, and we look forward to the, the 10th River Parade this year, and we'll do something special this year for the 10th Parade. So thank you very much.
Well, appreciated. Mike, if people want to enter for next year, it's probably not too early to start thinking about it. What should they do?
Yes, they could go on to the website at OKCparade.com, and they can go ahead and enter now if they want. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Mike. Let's show our appreciation. It's the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the journal for February 11th and 18th, and item 4B is to approve the journal for January 28th and February 4th. Any comments or questions on the journals? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item five is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, a couple. First on page nine, on the consent docket, item AM, the contract with McAfee and Taft for legal services, we're asked that that be stricken, and we'll bring that back. There's an error in it, we'll bring that back next week. And then on to page 15, under item eight, F1. Item G, 400 Southwest 28th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item J, 1501 Southeast 45th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item K, 1020 Southwest 60th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item M, 3105 Southwest 95th Street, we ask that that be stricken. Again, the owner has secured.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? Then we'll recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Item E has been struck. There are five remaining items, and I'll look for a motion.
Move the item.
All right, comments or questions on the MFA?
We also need to strike E. Did we say yes?
Yeah, E. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Well, adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Two items.
Move the item.
Actually, three items when you count the claims and payroll. Any comments here on anything involving the PPA? All right, looks like we're good to go. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Four items.
Move the item.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any comments on the EAT? Ready to go? All right, cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Adjourn the OC EAT and reconvene the council meeting with a consent docket.
Move the item. Is any of it considered consideration?
All right. Fairly lengthy consent docket today. Any comments or questions here?
Mayor, I did have a couple. 6A, 6K, and 6AE.
8B, Your Honor.
All right, Meg, you want to get started with item A?
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. I just, this is a contract to purchase SEP Technology for the police department, and the memo originally suggested that they thought they would purchase the, both systems from the same provider, and we chose to go with two different companies. And I was just curious as to whether or not there was decent communication between the two systems.
Amy Simpson's here.
Amy's here.
The chief could probably speak more to the technical, but during the committee's evaluation, it was very clear that the two types of systems were different and that we would definitely get a better product if we didn't go with the same vendor, because these vendors were really experts in what they were experts in.
Okay.
But then the other system was more of a secondary for them. But yes, I believe the police department can make them communicate properly.
Okay. So the choice was instead of going with a single vendor with a second product that wasn't quite as good, to go with the expert in, in both areas?
Correct.
Okay. Great. All righty, that fixes that one. And 6K is a loan out of our Mura District Economic Redevelopment Fund, and I was just curious if there were any dollars left in that fund. It's been a while since we've heard about it, and it was a revolving fund, and it did great work. I just didn't know if there was fund balance available still.
It's almost depleted. After the loan that you're approving today, we'll have an approximate balance of about $55,000, $60,000.
Okay. But it is, there is a teeny bit there if somebody was relocating a business downtown or needing something, they could contact the planning department to...
Correct. And also, we get program income, approximately $25,000 a month, so that'll continue.
Exactly. There's loans being repaid back in.
Yes.
So program coming in. Great. All righty. And maybe city manager, 6AE has to do with the extension of the canal, and I was just curious as to where we were with our negotiations.
Eric Winger is an expert on that very subject.
Railroad. Thank you, Eric.
Yeah, we are continuing to, to work on the final agreement with the railroad, and I feel that we're very close on that. So our goal is to hopefully have that finished in the next month as we get ready to re-empound the water and reopen the eastern basin of the Oklahoma River.
That became much more difficult than we'd anticipated.
We have, do we have pedestrian access currently or no access?
We do not. We do not. What we do have the availability of is a revocable permit with the railroad. So anytime we do have a planned event, we've worked out documentation that we've used throughout the winter for those events to allow that pedestrian access to occur. We also have had the ability to have limited boat access for those specialized events, but daily, we do not have that yet. But then again, that's what we hope to have in the next month.
And the agreement will cover both of those things, pedestrian and...
It will. And I think the reason that it makes it more difficult is we're looking for something that really has no time limit on it, that it's going to be an indefinite agreement that's going to go out for the life of the canal and the life of the river, and that's what's just made it a little more challenging.
Okay. Thank you, Eric.
All right, Larry?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd just like to comment on 8B. It's kind, this relates to kind of Ward Three's Project 180 work going on. We have a sidewalk on both sides of 23rd Street project, including pedestrian lighting, vehicle lighting, redoing the street, also putting in iconic markers. The first phase is under construction right now, going from Tulsa to Ann Arbor. And this item right here, again, shows that the second phase is, is coming along next year, going from Ann Arbor to Pinale, which is the Bethany limit. And then the third phase will go from Tulsa to I-44, and we're real excited about that. Real appreciative of Public Works, Eric Winger and his staff's efforts. This is a project that was first dreamed up back in 2001, 2002, and it does take a while to get this done, but it does show that we're continuing to make investments in the peripheral parts of our city to beautify it and to make it more walkable and to be a part of the strategic neighborhood initiative, neighborhood initiative to strengthen, in this case, the Windsor Hills Shopping Center. So Eric, thank you to your staff for all you're done. And again, citizens, this shows that the project is moving forward. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yeah, Pete?
Mayor, I just had a comment on N1. I'm sorry, I didn't mention it earlier. It includes, it's a series of additional drainage inlets to be installed in, both in Ward Six and in Ward Four. And there's one, I'm sure that, in Ward Four, that Meg is familiar with, and that's the one at 25th and South Walker. That's been a serious drainage problem for a long time, and to see that handled is, is going to be a big help to that whole community out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete, for mentioning that. The one at 10th and Lee is also just critically important, and I appreciate the Public Works staff being able to identify the ability to get those projects done.
Any other comments on the consent docket? We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And we're on to the concurrence docket. Any comments or questions from council or anyone else in the chambers on the concurrence? All right, do we have a second? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Now, we're on to item eight, and these are items that require a separate vote. We begin with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward Six. It's an ABC issue at 1228 Southwest 2nd Street. Meg?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This is a request for an ABC3 license in the farmer's market area. Is the applicant here? Applicant? Anywhere? Huh. Well, we spoke about this yesterday over the phone, and, you know, this is an area that, you know, we've talked about a lot, is ripe for development. There were no protests at the planning commission. It is an ABC3 license, which we talked about hours of operation. It will be open late, you know, as late as 2:00 a.m. There's not a lot of residential around it at the moment. We talked about security, outdoor lighting, there's going to be an outdoor deck, and lots of the kinds of things that they're going to do to help enhance the neighborhood, and so I'm going to move for approval.
Second.
Bob, do you have any comments?
I just want to state that there's an amendment at Planning Commission where they deleted the outside area. It's just the building that's getting the ABC3 at this point.
Oh, okay. I, I thought there was a small outside terrace area, but that's been deleted as well?
They'll, I think it was 29, you know, 2900 square feet, but they said they'd come back for the outside area to lay a point.
Okay. It's, it's a small building on the north side of that area, and, you know, I, I think the developer is, or the operators from Austin, and, you know, hope, hope this will be a catalyst to some other good things happening again. They're, they're not going to be serving food, which is the reason it's the ABC3. They're going to use food trucks and some other types of things.
Right. And they didn't think they could meet the 50% minimum, so that's why it's...
That's why we did this. Okay.
Bob or Meg, is there a concern over parking?
In the location this is, there's no requirement for parking in, in downtown, so they didn't express that there'd be a, that they had a concern about parking.
But David, until we really get going down there, there isn't much parking. I mean, you know, the farmer's market, when they have events, utilizes, you know, all of that land in and around the area.
There are few surface lots down there and a lot of street parking in that area. It's, at this point, underutilized, so...
Okay. But when there are events at the farmer's market, parking I think is an issue, the lack of available parking. Okay. Thank you.
I would move approval.
Anyone here hoping to comment on item 8A1? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward Three at 7825 Winnie Street. Larry?
Yes, Bob, is the, he's been here yet?
We've, we've had a couple of discussions with him, but I don't believe he's going to be here. My recommendation is to defer this indefinitely. He came in initially, he wanted to expand a building and found out that he couldn't do it without rezoning, and since then, he's withdrawn that application, and we can't get him to respond. So an indefinite deferral, if he decides to come back, that saves him half his fee, but at this point, we can't.
I'd like to move indefinite deferral on this item.
All right, cast your votes. That item is deferred indefinitely. Item 8A3 is a zoning case in Ward Eight. It's currently a planned unit development at 9435 Northwest 122nd Street. It would be going from AA Agricultural District to a new PUD. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. Francis, has anybody signed up to speak on this point? Is the owner or is representative here?
Ron Walters, 8501 South Walker.
Hi, Ron Walters, 8501 South Walker, representing the owners.
Would you give us a brief description of the proposal here?
Sure. What they're, my owners are basically wanting to build a office warehouse type of business park in there. We're going to take a street all the way down the east side of the property there, and then the property on the, all the west side will be lots for these. They will start immediately, they're in the, oh, overpriced private aircraft business of parting out and stuff, so all these expensive aircraft they have, they park them inside buildings and pull those amazingly expensive parts off of them. We're following the, I don't remember the, we want our buildings beside the highway pretty guidelines, is what I've been calling it. The buildings will be brick, with decorative drive-in exterior, you know, porches to stop setup. There's a fairly extensive amount of landscaping involved in those guidelines, too, so we'll be following all, all those issues.
The guidelines, I think you're talking about, are for appearance corridor?
There you go. That's, that's what I was looking for.
They're fairly extensive, but you're going to try to comply with me?
Yes, sir, yes.
If there's no any other questions, I would move for approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Anyone here hoping to comment on item 8A-3? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 8A-4 is a zoning case in Ward Seven. The address is 1215 Northeast 34th Street. It's currently R4 general residential, and it would become a new simplified planned unit development. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody sign up? Number One signed up. Early on, there were some issues dealing with this particular spud, but after talking to Superintendent Lopez, those concerns were addressed, so I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Anyone here hoping to speak on item 8A-4? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 8A-5 is a zoning case in Ward Two at 6100 North Robinson Avenue. It's currently R1 single-family residential, O2 general office, and an I-1 light industrial district, and they're putting it together into a new spud. Ed?
This is to permit the expansion of the existing Girl Scout of Western Oklahoma headquarters. There's no protests, and I would move for approval. Has anybody signed up to speak, or?
No.
I'd move for approval.
All right, we're casting your votes then on item 8A-5. Cast your votes now. It passes unanimously. Item 8A-6 is a zoning case in Ward Five at 2232 Southwest 104th Street. It's currently R1 single-family residential, and it would be put into a new spud if approved. And David, we have three people that have signed up to speak.
Thank you, your honor.
Mr. Box, would you like to make the opening presentation?
Yes, thank you, Councilman. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, and John Featherston with the LaSalle Group, who will be the developer, is also here, and Gary Nolan, who's a civil engineer on the project. We have a unique application in that this 3.94 acres is part of what was once a bigger 10-acre tract where the Schaefer estate and mansion sat, on southwest 104th, just west of Pennsylvania. What the development proposal you have before you now is a single-use SPUD to allow for a memory care facility. When we got hired on this case, they had already filed the spud, and they had done all the things that the Planning Commission and planning staff asked applicants to do. They've limited that spud to a single use. There's not a use unit within the code for memory care, so what they went with is the congregate care, but added language to further limit it to only the memory care. And why that is significant is because their hallways are only five foot wide. Skilled nursing centers and nursing homes require six-foot hallways for the beds, so all they can do is the memory care use. When we looked at it, we saw that the neighborhood abutted us immediately south and immediately east, recognized that there might be some issues, but we helped with the fact that we went with a single use, and we went with a enhanced landscaping plan that we might be able to address those concerns. The protests came to Planning Commission, and part of their, their fear was that this was somehow a, a commercial intrusion into this site, and it would pave the way for future commercial development. The base zoning district that we had in the spud at the time was the R4, your multifamily-based zoning district. At the Planning Commission hearing, we agreed to modify that to R1, to match not only its current zoning, but all the zoning to the south and to the west of us, with the addition that we would have the memory care use, but the base zoning would match, and we hoped that that would satisfy the neighbors. It has still not satisfied the neighbors, so I, I think it's important to look at what we have before you, and that is just this 3.94 acres. The client that I have has nothing to do with the, the balance of the 10 acres. This is the only portion of the estate that they will own. So what they set out to do with the landscape plan is provide not only a great facility for them, but something that will be compatible and nice to be enjoyed by the neighbors. This is the most intense landscaping plan I have seen on any project. Most applicants are trying to meet what the city code says. This is far and away exceeding the city code. In addition to all the trees, there will be birmingham over here to, to raise the level, and then the trees planted on top of that. One of the other potential issues that were, that were brought up at Planning Commission was some flooding problems that the neighborhood has had. What we've agreed to do is oversize our detention pond. We believe that will decrease the historic rate of flow. If there is a problem, that, that should solve it. Three main issues remain. The protesters are upset about the location of the generator. This box highlights the location of the generator. We, we measured its day, and that is 125 feet from our property line. Now, there's an additional 25 to 30 feet before you, you reach the house, but in addition to the, the number of feet, we also have significant landscaping, not just here, but immediately south of that generator. We can agree that any testing of the generator will be done within normal business hours, that being Monday through Friday, between the hours of 8:00 to 5:00. The supplier that does this testing is, is a group that has multiple testing operations across the city, so we can't, you know, get them to a, a Monday at 8:30, but what we can agree to do is normal business hours Monday through Friday, in an effort to, to make no impact onto the neighborhood. The other issue that, that they had was the dumpster location, which you can see right here. That location was selected, one, ease of, of use on the site, but also, it's the furthest away that we could put it on our site from any of the neighborhood. If we moved it to the west, we'd be abutting the neighborhood directly west. If we moved it further south, I'm not sure the trucks could get in, but it, it gets closer to the neighbors on the south. So in addition to being the, the furthest from any house, we're also going to add significant landscaping around it. It will be in a, a brick enclosure, and not just a cinder block like you see, but it will be a brick enclosure that actually matches the materials of the building. Most applications you see before you, they have a requirement that the buildings be 70% brick and stone. This will be 90% brick and stone. It will be a very nice facility, all brick and stone. This is a, a private pay facility, and it's one where they have one in the Edmund Market, if anyone is familiar with. It's a group out of Dallas, so this, this is what they do. They, the last issue that remains is the protesters want a 10-foot, a solid concrete wall along the south property line. We, we do not agree with that. We think that is a, a problem for several reasons. First and foremost, when you put a concrete wall, it's going to affect the ability to do some of that landscaping, but what you have, all the neighbors on the south have fences, some have walls at eight feet tall, so what you create is a dead zone. You have their fence, two feet or three feet, and then our fence, and what you have is a maintenance nightmare. You have weeds and, and trash, and it becomes a, a very difficult task to maintain that. So rather than a, a concrete wall, what we would prefer is this, very nice landscaping. That would be, in our opinion, something that the neighbors would be able to enjoy and, and benefit as those trees mature. Currently on the site, there are some trees, but this will far exceed anything that is on the site now, and we certainly think it will be a, a better solution than a, a 10-foot wall. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and my, my client's here to answer any questions as well.
David, I do have one question. As far as visitors to the patients or residents of the care unit, do you know what the hours of visitation are?
John Featherston with the LaSalle Group, 545 East John Carpenter Freeway, Irving, Texas. Mayor, council, city manager. I mean, this is, these folks all have some type of memory care need. They have to, to, to be able to live in our community. They have Alzheimer's, a lot of the folks, or some other related, some other dementia of some form. I mean, this is their, effectively, their home, their house. The hours are open, I mean, for, for their family, friends to come. You're not going to see people here at all hours of the night typically, unless somebody's not possibly feeling well or something. Yeah, certainly, they might come up and visit their family member.
Okay.
Be happy to answer any other questions.
On the rendering, there are some parking spaces on the southern part. Are they for employees, or is that where visitors would park?
Those are what we would call for, effectively, I mean, we're not going to say that visitors can't park there. I mean, if we, you know, had a special event, which is, you know, a few times a year, certainly there might be a couple cars back there, but we're going to have shrubbery planted there that's going to be, provide a headlight screen and bumper screen of the vehicles. It's primarily for employees.
Okay.
Yes, what we've done is, there's actually a solid row of trees here, and then another secondary row of, of plantings there.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the council? Mr. Groves?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, when this case began, we were very concerned about several things, not about the facility itself. We welcome the facility to the neighborhood. We were concerned about the larger picture, because this is, as Mr. Box has said, if you take a look at it, only one part of a larger tract, the 10-acre tract, and if you look to the immediate east of the area proposed to be rezoned, that structure there is the Schaefer Mansion, the Reverend Schaefer built. And for many years, everyone knew and accepted that that entire tract would remain commercial. In fact, at one point, the Schaefers planned to have one structure to the west and one to the east of the main mansion for each of the children. If you look to the intersection of Pennsylvania and 104, that hard corner belongs to the Neighborhood Association. That is one of our common areas. So when this came up, we were concerned that this entire R1 strip was going to be stripped out for commercial. That was our concern. And we had no problem with the concept of the facility itself, but the way they wanted to do it was underlying R4, and we felt that was too intense for the neighborhood. So we compromised at the Planning Commission level, that the spud will now have underlying R1. And why did we want that? Because we felt that if they had a spud with underlying R4, they would have a better argument for stripping out the whole thing for commercial. The plan was to tear down the mansion and put commercial between this facility all the way over to our land on the hard corner. And we felt like underlying four gave them a leg up in that respect. Well, the commission solved that problem for us, because the commission recommended the spud have underlying R1, so that lends, that lessens the strength of an argument that it should all be stripped out for commercial. We were principally worried about sprouts going in and backing up to some of those houses. So, that problem was solved, and that just left us with a few design issues. And I sent a letter brief to each of you, and said there were three of them, and Mr. Box correctly identified those three. One is the generator. We just need the generator to be muffled some. I've represented businesses with generators, and I know that they can be noisy. They have to be tested. And what I've done, on behalf of my clients with generators, is make an agreement with the neighborhood as to when we're going to test them. The neighborhood can decide, you know, do you want to have it Sunday afternoon, or Wednesday morning, or whatever you'd like, and we would accommodate them. And then we would muffle them as best we could, so it doesn't disturb folks to the south. So, we just need an agreement on the, on the generator. Mr. Box says, well, it's 125 feet from the property line, and there is landscaping, and they, they'll agree to test their generators anytime they want, basically, 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. We'd like something a little better than that. It's not asking much. On the dumpster, we're glad to hear it's going to be enclosed by brick. That's a good thing. We just need to know what its location is going to be. Now, on the wall, it's not unusual to buffer more intense uses from less intense uses, and this is a, a, a home, but it is also a commercial activity. And there will be people coming and going, as Mr. Featherston said, 24/7. And, and that's fitting. You want the patients to be able to see their family whenever they need to be seen. But there will be people coming and going. There will be lights, and we just want to buffer it better than landscaping. Landscaping's nice, but landscaping doesn't stop noise. Landscaping doesn't stop light, and we want a brick wall, not a brick wall, a concrete wall, which is a lot less expensive than a brick wall. And I asked Mr. Box for it some time ago, and he said he thought it would be cost prohibitive, so my client, Mr. Meyer, went to the company that specializes in these things, Superior Concrete, and said, "Well, what would you charge us for a wall along the whole area, in case the day ever came that the Schaefers agreed to develop this all as one PUD, which we thought was the best idea?" That's not going to happen, but we thought that was the best way to actually do it. So we got an estimate on 900 feet of concrete wall. We also got an estimate with per linear foot, and we enclosed that estimate with the letter brief that we sent you. If you break it out by linear feet, the cost of the project would be $30,000 and change, and really, I, not, in, in terms of the scale of the project, in my judgment, not really that expensive. So we think a nice concrete wall would, would be useful. I'm going to ask Mr. Meyer, who lives in the neighborhood, to address it with a little more specificity. So, we appreciate what the Planning Commission did for us, and all we need to support this project is a understanding of when the generators are going to be tested, and what we can do to muffle their sound, and we need a wall. So I'll let Mr. Meyer say a few things about the wall. Yes, Mayor?
Eric, would the wall be on the west side, next to the house?
South side. It would buffer, it would buffer the, the facility against the homes to the south. To the west, I don't represent the neighborhood to the west, Mayor. That's St. Andrews.
Okay.
The neighborhood to the south is Greenbrier at Kingswood, and that is my client.
Is there an entry from that street that comes up there?
Greenbrier Chase? Not really. Is there?
Is there an entry into this property from there?
There could be, but it's not used.
There's, there's no plan to do that, Mayor. I mean, the people would come and go from 104th.
They're going to come from 104? Okay.
So if you'll just kindly put the arm on these folks and get us a wall, I think we'll be happy.
All right. Well, we have three people, I guess...
We need to hear Mr. Meyer. He can tell you more about that.
Yeah, we have three people that have signed up to speak. Oh, did you want to speak first? Yeah, you, you're the one that has signed up, so is that where you want to go with this, David?
Yes, thank you.
Robert Meyer?
I'm Bob Meyer. I live in Kingswood. I'm also a homeowner. I'm on the board. I have been for 10 or 11 years. I want to thank Mr. White for OSSM. I'm going to digress for a moment. Both of my children graduated from there. There are two of the 60 that have PhDs. That is the best school, preparatory school, anywhere in this nation, and you all have done an outstanding job with it. Regarding this wall, the wall we requested was a wall that matches our existing wall that we paid for around the rest of our addition. If you want to see the wall, it goes, it goes 3/4 of a mile down Pennsylvania, comes in our entrance around the duck pond. It's a precast concrete product that we purchased because it was economical. When we were told from the developer that... When we were told from the developer that it was too expensive for them to consider, I contacted, because I had given them the manufacturer's information, phone number, contact, the whole, and the description of our wall, because we wanted it to match. If we're going to have walls, they ought to match. I learned from Superior that they had not given anyone else a quote on it, so I asked them to give me a quote to do the entire south side of the Schaefer property, or the north side of Kingswood's property, and which they did. They quoted it as a 10-foot wall. They also noted that some of our other walls are 8 feet high, some of them are 10. If sprouts, which at the time, we were at the planning commission, sprouts wasn't even on the horizon, except every place except here at City Hall, it was all over town, now sprouts says maybe they're not coming, but maybe they are coming. And that goes back to this issue of developing the, that, the rest of that 10 acres, and why we were concerned about it. That was originally planned residential property, the Schaefers purchased it, were going to build three large homes, that was fine. So it never got finally platted into Kingswood, but it could have been developed as part of Kingswood even today. Greenbrier Chase, dead ends at the property line. And of course, you can see there in the corner, the, this spud takes a corner of the street, and, and obviously, if there's nursing or care facilities and commercial use, we do not want access from that property into Kingswood on Greenbrier Chase. But had Greenbrier Chase gone north, it could have supported a residential, high-density residential development there, much like Bergamo, or many of the garden home facilities that they're building all over town that people buy as soon as they build them. But obviously, this property isn't as worth as much for residential as it is for nursing homes and grocery stores. So that's what's driving all the applications, is how much somebody can get for the land. Well, again, once this spud goes in there, the ability to access the rest of the property from Greenbrier Chase is cut off, so you've condemned it, in essence, or they have, not the city, but the owners, to only being accessible from 104th Street. So the next thing we're going to hear is, the only thing we can use the rest of it for is something commercial, which it doesn't go to the corner. We own the corner, and our homeowners' association isn't going to sell it. I don't think we could sell it. We have been contacted by all of the additions, St. Andrews, The Fountains, Lakewood Run, and Hunter's Chase, which are all the additions that are on the south side of 104th Street, between May Avenue and Pennsylvania. They don't want commercial development down on that corner. And I know we're not talking about commercial, we're talking about this facility. This is a, it's a nice, I have no criticism of their facility, I have no criticism of what they do, but by placing it there, it's going to limit the use of the rest of that property for things that we truly believe are inconsistent. So, and I don't know, I was disappointed as we went through this process, that the cities, everybody just limit, just looks at the little picture, and when they find nothing wrong with it, they go on, and now, late, we'll deal with the problem later. 104, so, but the wall, we feel like we're going to need the wall all the way through there, that's why I had it quoted for the entire, they don't have to pay for all of it, because it's not all being developed today, but if there's going to have to be a wall, we want it to match. We've had no discussions with them, one-on-one, about the wall, in terms of whether 8 feet would be sufficient or 10 feet. There could be some cost savings, it doesn't have to be 2 feet from the existing fences. We have a shared, common property there. On Pennsylvania, when we put, when we put our wall up, the association, the homeowners that backed up to Pennsylvania had no objection to removing their fences and tying their fences to the wall, so that there are no strips of weeds and garbage and trash. So, I believe those issues could be worked out. We believe the wall is an important buffer between the two, and we would, I would love for somebody to redesign this and move the spud to the east end of the property, put the assisted living there, and leave the ability to develop residential at the north end of Greenbrier Chase, but nobody seems to be interested in doing that, and I'm not in charge. So, I thank you for your time, Mr. Meyer, members of the council, Mr. City Manager. We have always supported everything Oklahoma City does. We've been disappointed in our ability to effectively address this issue. We drive 104th and Penn, we know about the flooding, we got plenty of water, we got more than enough water. So there are issues in the area that we're familiar with, and we need the city, we will work with the city, but we need the city to work with us. Thank you.
Deborah Woods?
Your Honor, we've been kind of talking over, David, just throw something out. Evidently, there's a wall around most of the Greenbrier property, but we're talking about a wall in this area right here. Is there any way that the Neighborhood Association, in conjunction with the developer, would split the cost of this, put the wall up, and split it 50/50?
We could certainly consider it, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that our homeowners would feel like we should. It's entirely possible if that spud went down to the east end of the Schaefer's property, and we had some more encouraging discussions about doing some appropriate high-density residential development there, that would be more compatible to our neighborhood than the back of a grocery store, it's very possible that our homeowners' association would look at something like that. I would, if, if this could be delayed, put back, and do that, we'd sit down at the table in extremely good faith and try and resolve something like that, and we might be able to help.
Mayor Rock, can I make a comment?
Okay, we still have two more people that have signed up.
I understand, but I just don't want to respond directly to that. First of all, as much as I understand, because we, I met with you, but Bob and I have been, we had lunch and talked about it, and I understand completely your anxiety about the other piece of property, but we can't do anything about that. I mean, I think, I, I thought I've said that when we, that we have to deal with what we can deal with, and what, all we can deal with is this particular piece of property.
I, and I appreciate, I understand.
I do understand your anxiety, but I, I would also, I'm a little bit, I would say that the fact that the, this property was converted from an R4 originally to an R1 is a gigantic step for you.
Yes, sir.
So to feel like that somehow you've been, the process hasn't been productive for you, if that's all you get, that's been extremely productive, especially considering that your concerns are the second piece of property more than this one. I mean, that is a gigantic win for you, to have this one be R1-based. I mean, that, that's huge.
And I recognize-
And I'm sure you know that.
Yes, sir, I do.
You've been around this business a long time, and I'm sure you know that, but it's, I don't want you to minimize it, and I wouldn't want the other constituents that, that, of David's there in, in Greenbrier, to real, to think that's not, not anything, because it is, it is a major piece to go from, from a, have a, a high-density residential to R1, as the underlying zoning.
Yes, and, and, and we do recognize that, and Councilman Greenwell has met with us, and, and we've had a lot of discussions, and we have tried to put the different pieces together. This wall, you know, I was trying to address the wall, I, and again, whether, I think this wall issue could be resolved, and if the develop, because, in essence, the Schaefers, they say they're not developing, but to the extent they're selling their property in pieces, they are creating a development there through the sale of their property, and this is only the first piece. You know, we discussed it with the planning commission, that on this size of tract, there's good reason why you should have somebody go back and do an entire proposal for it, different uses, but then everybody can see everything at one time, nobody has to have apprehension about what's coming tomorrow, and it's easier to reach accommodations that work.
I pointed, I, I agree with that completely, and I think everybody around the horse shoe agrees with that. My point is, I'm not sure we've got the ability to do that. We have the authority to deal with property that's not before us, is my, is what my concern.
I, I would respectfully submit, I think you could, and Mr. Groves may tell me I'm wrong, I don't know, he's the expert, but it seems to me you could send it back to the planning commission and tell them to do that. And I don't know, that's a good idea.
Of course, you're right, Councilman, you don't have subject matter jurisdiction over anything that is not before you. But you are the body that makes decisions about planning, and you're the only body that has the authority to enact ordinances. The planning commission's the recommending body, and-
Have you told them that recently?
Sir?
Have you told them that recently?
I, I try to flatter them as much as I can, actually, Pete, but surely, everybody understands that we have to look down the road, we have to see, okay, how is this piece going to be part of the larger picture? So when we started out, we said, "We would like you to do a pud," but, for the whole 10 acres, but that's not going to work out, because the Schaefers are going to sell it off piece by piece. They've got, they've got the LaSalle Group on this, and what happens to the rest of it's up in the air. Maybe sprouts, maybe not. But we, for our own protection, we had to look at the larger picture, and that's why we said initially, we think it should be a spud. So we want to try to tie it all together, and all we can ask the council to do is encourage this developer to consider the wall that we want, because it's going to be part of a larger picture. When all is said and done, we're going to need a wall that goes all the way over to the wall that we built. So we just, we're glad to sit down with the developer, and with David, and try to haggle these things out, but, you know, and, and if you continue this a week or so, we may be able to do that. But we, we do need to look down the road a little bit, and whatever we do needs to be consistent with what's likely to happen in the future.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Deborah Woods?
Hello, my name is Deborah Woods, and I live at 10608 Greenbrier Chase, at the north end of Greenbrier Chase, and the house immediately behind the Schaefer estate, immediately behind the house. Trying to revamp some of my thoughts, because of what's already been shared. Speaking for our household, we are very concerned about the assisted living-
Deborah, I missed exactly where you are on this map. Can you go through that again?
I live at 10608 Greenbrier Chase, the hand just went over it, that is my house.
Okay, thanks.
We live in the shadow of the Schaefer estate.
I was just trying to figure out your perspective, so go ahead.
Yes, okay, thank you. We bought this house about 10 years ago because we wanted a haven from urbanization, we wanted a place that was a pocket within a, a city that's growing rapidly, and we've always been surrounded by residential properties, and had no reason to believe that it would be otherwise. So of course, what's going on right now concerns us deeply. We really appreciate the R1 underlying zoning, thank you for that, we know it is no small We are concerned about housing that's densely populated, located right there, as you can look, when, when we walk out of our house, we would look to the right, we would see that. I know there'll be some shrubbery and such, but we would see the parking lot, we would see the property. Also, as a parent, it deeply concerns me that there would be additional access to our neighborhood from people who may work there or come and visit there. I think that anyone who lives in that house would be concerned about it, anyone who lives at that end of the neighborhood would be concerned about that. So to me, a barrier wall would be absolutely non-negotiable if we care about the children and safety of our community. That's certainly not to bring into question every person that would come in and visit people there, but it would add additional assurance for us as parents in the neighborhood. We're also concerned about the flooding from developing that property, I know it's been addressed, I don't know that you all have seen a visual picture of some of the flooding that has been going on. We have lived there 10 years, I have walked the creek many times, we love, that's one of the reasons we live in the neighborhood, is to walk that greenbelt, to get away from the world, and just to be in a peaceful park-like area. But in the years that we've lived there, the flooding has increased substantially, so much so, that life is threatened and property is threatened, and-
When is that picture from?
This is a picture, when is it from? I think it's been a couple years, I can't place it exactly, I can tell you where it is, but I can tell you that this is not the only storm that's happened that has flooded so significantly like this. I have a friend that lives in our neighborhood that's raising her grandchildren, and she has been part of a live water rescue in this area. Paramedics, firemen had to come in and rescue her, I can't imagine, I can't imagine what it would have been like for her grandchildren and children to have lost her. I have other pictures as well, I'd be happy to share with you, and this is increasingly what's going on. Every time there is a rainstorm, the banks are eroded dramatically, in front of some homes, it's up to a foot, and property is being threatened. I know that one of the women who came in and testified from the commission last time that we were here with the planning commission, she said, "The bound, the, the bounds of the creek are the responsibility of the homeowners' association." I'm not sure how that can, by the city, be said in good conscience, when you all are the ones approving the projects that are bringing more and more water through our neighborhood, through our creeks, that are endangering the people that live in that neighborhood, that are threatening property values. We don't have the right, I don't think, to dam up that prop, the water, we don't have the right, I don't think, to say, "No, your water can't come in anymore." So I don't think that we should have sole responsibility for the maintenance of the banks of this creek. I think that's most of what I have to say, thank you, I know you all have listened to a lot. We love Oklahoma City, I'm a transplanted Austinite, but I have come to love Oklahoma City, and one of the reasons is because of the good city governance, and, and I'm just glad to be here, and thank you for your consideration, and those are my primary concerns, the safety of my children and the children in the neighborhood, that we would have some sort of barrier there, something that would separate us from having to look through shrubbery at a parking lot and that kind of thing. We have had drunk people show up in front of our house in the not-too-distant past, it's something that did not happen 10 years ago, it's something that happens a little more often now, trying to find a way out or whatever, and I think a wall would be a good thing to have. Also, I do think that the flooding issue needs to be considered, I don't think that the detention pond that's been proposed is enough to help take care of what's going on. Can I leave these pictures with you?
Sure.
Okay.
Barry Woods?
Barry Woods, 10608 Greenbrier Chase, I'm closely related to the previous speaker. I am here to request that you turn down this spud strictly because of the water issues that are going on in that creek. When I moved in 10 years ago, that was pretty much a gentle creek, year-round, never a problem, never any flooding. Shatney Square kind of changed all of that by dumping all of their water into our creek with absolutely no retention pond. Now, I realize that this particular addition has claimed that they will put a retention pond in there and keep their water to no more than what comes out now. I live on the street where the water comes out of that property right now, and I never have water running down my gutter. That is absorptive property right now. They're coming in there with about an acre to an acre and a half of impervious cover that will not, obviously, soak into the ground. And putting in a small retention pond with, what, a 6-inch outlet to maybe not come more than what we get now, I think is, is a bit of a ridiculous thought. But the big problem is, what's going to happen with the rest of the property? And while you say you cannot deny this spud, I think this council does indeed have the power to deny this spud, because it isn't a part of the whole property. That is one contiguous piece of property now, that we're trying to, without subdividing, put a spud on. I think the council could deny that, I think the council should deny that. I think you have one last chance at saving that creek and putting a retention pond down in the lower corner, that will solve some of the problems that Shatney Square has developed, that all of that property to the northeast has developed without retention pond. All of that has been dumped in our creek over the years, because this council has agreed that it would be all right to do it without proper stormwater retention. And here we are, taking one more piece, and starting to make that road again, of where are we going to- are we going to put the water? I think the owner of this property should be involved, you notice that they're not here to defend this. I think the owner should be involved in creating a spud for the entire piece of property, and that also addresses a retention for a solution to this water that's coming down our causeway now. I'm a little emotional about this because the council, the Planning Department says, "That creek is your responsibility," but we have no control over the water that comes into that creek, you do. So who bears the responsibility? You do. Is there a solution? I think so, but it's going to require cooperation of our neighborhood, that corner, which is the low spot for retention pond, and that owner of that property. And by giving him this spud, all you're doing is saying you're one step closer to denying that solution.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this item that didn't show up or didn't sign up?
I think you might be. May I check this out?
Sure.
May I approach and give something to the council? Yes, please.
Good morning, and I apologize for being late, I didn't know I was supposed to be here. My name is Benjamin Reese, I live at 10600 Turnberry Lane, where the R1 is, it's the house due north of there on the corner where the properties intersect.
Okay.
And that's basically kind of a three-corner intersect there. I understand that in the beginning of this session, that someone addressed the wall as only being needed in one location. Really, I'm the one that brought the wall to light in the first place, and why I think we need it is if you notice the line of embarkation, the dotted line there that goes up there, it puts the new development right up against the backyards of those five homes in our subdivision, and I'm talking in the backyard. And in the original proposal documents that they showed us, the very first ones, they had kind of a rough draft of a plan, and in that plan, they had trees drawn into their development that were in our backyards as being part of their development. So I'm a little concerned that, A, they're really not giving consideration to their new neighbors who are residents, long-term residents, who, as you've already heard many times, Mr. Mayor, that people have moved there for the quiet nature of it. I'm a transplant also, my grandpa was an oil well worker almost 100 years ago in this state, and finally, one of his descendants decided to get out of California and come here to this beautiful state and this beautiful city. And I picked that neighborhood for one reason, I'm a vet, I've been around airplanes my whole life, and although I didn't want to be that close to the airport, I picked that neighborhood because it was quiet and because it was peaceful, and the surroundings were nice, and I wanted to live there, and it was someplace I wanted to live. I looked at 100 homes in many different areas, and that's where I picked, and I picked it for that specific purpose. I don't mind them putting this property there, quite frankly. It could be anything, you know, it could be something weird or something very loud and noisy and congestive. This is not a bad thing that they want to do, I don't think, but give us a little consideration, build us a wall, make sure that our water runoff concerns are addressed so that we don't have to worry about the kids getting flooded out, about animals running out. They're going to run all the animals out of that 11-acre plot there. There's all kinds of animals in that thing, they've lived there for years because the Schaefer's were good stewards of nature, okay? They just let things go. They kept it nice and clean, it was nice and tidy. If you drive by there, it's not a big estate-looking place, really, honestly. It's a beautiful big house and a lot of rolling green grass and a few trees, that's it. And we have hawks, we have squirrels, I mean, I could go on and on. Y'all have lived in Oklahoma most of your lives or all of your lives in some cases, so you know what we're dealing with here. They're going to run all of that out of there very rapidly into these neighborhoods, they're going to ruin all our beautiful gardens that we've put a lot of effort and money into. Kids are going to get bit, I promise you, kids are going to get bit, and it's going to be a nightmare if they don't just simply take a little bit of time to address some of our concerns. Give us a wall.
What are the height of the homes? Are these two-story homes?
Some are, yes, Mr. Mayor, some are two-story homes. Mine is a single story, most are three-car garage, mine and a few others are two-car garage. We're not a bunch of rich people.
No, I'm just trying to get a visual of the wall and how it would impact the home.
Visually?
Yeah, if they were one-story or multi-story.
Right.
Okay.
Along that wall, I will tell you that those are all single-story, to be honest with you. Six to eight-foot, you know, some kind of permanent structure that would help retain any moisture that comes, you know, people that just want to meander over into it. They're telling us that we have some wood fences that are about ready to fall down, we've never had neighbors to have to be worried about, and they think that's fine. Well, if those walls, if our fences come down, or we take them down because we're not required to have them, then what's to stop the poor residents of that place from walking right out of that place and walking into our backyard, getting hurt by our barbecues, you know, dog-cat stuff? Let's put a little barrier up there, be good neighbors, be good stewards of our neighborhoods.
Appreciate you coming down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate your time.
Yeah, why don't we let you all address issues that have been brought up, but try not to go back and cover a territory that's already been brought up.
I'm not, I just wanted the council to know that the reason I did not request a wall on the west side of the property to be rezoned is that's the St. Andrews neighborhood. I do not represent the St. Andrews neighborhood.
And I'm glad that's why he came, because it shouldn't be that the neighborhood that has a lawyer gets something that the neighborhood that doesn't have a lawyer does, so, I mean, that's something for us to consider, not you.
Your Honors, okay. Mr. Groves, is the issue concerning the dumpster resolved, in your opinion?
Are we happy with the dumpster? I think we're okay with the dumpster.
Okay, so we're down to two items, correct?
Yeah.
What are you suggesting with respect to a muffler on the generator?
There, I remember when I had a client had big backup generators, and I remember talking to the technology people that there were ways to add something to the muffler system of those generators that would keep the sound down. Now, that may have already been done, but there are things technologically that could be done, and we'd like to talk to them about that, but also, the testing time is important. We would like to make a suggestion as a neighbor, we haven't picked a time, but I remember in the past, you know, the neighbors said to my client, "Well, we like Sunday afternoon," I think they said, "is a good time, it's not going to disturb anybody," so, you know.
Okay. David, may I ask you a couple of questions?
I can address the noise on the generator.
Yeah, please, with respect to the...
The new generators are already muffled. They did some decibel readings on the generators they have on other facilities, and at about 100 feet, which is the property line, it measures less than a conversation between two people. So we don't think there'll be any impact, and that's without landscaping and everything else.
Okay, how long does a testing, what's the length of time to test a generator?
Typically, 30 minutes to an hour.
You let it run that long?
Yes, sir, by the time it may cool down. I mean, there's a major testing one time a year, it might run up to two hours, but we took multiple decibel readings, and I mean, standing with a decibel meter, holding it in your hand, right here talking, at like what David mentioned, is a higher decibel level, and David, I can get you the number, but is a higher level than at the property line.
Okay.
Running under load. We did the test under load also.
And how often does the test occur? I know you mentioned an annual test. Other than the annual test, how often do you test the generator?
There's a weekly, that's a real short one.
And the length of that test?
10 to 20 minutes.
Okay.
And our goal was rather than a Sunday when people might be at home enjoying it, if you do it during normal business hours, maybe people are gone, and even if they could hear it, it wouldn't be in there.
Personally, I would prefer that.
We might too. We just haven't agreed on anything. We might rather have a weekday too, where our neighborhood has to tell me, instruct me, you know, "What do you prefer?" and then we need to haggle it out with David. But my experience with generators is they can be pretty loud and pretty annoying. Mr. Mayor, the reason I said that about St. Andrews, by the way, was I just don't have the authority to...
I understand.
I wasn't suggesting they should go hire themselves a lawyer necessarily.
No, I wasn't either.
I can't ask for things when I don't represent people.
Right, okay, well, thank you, Eric. David, another question. What are your thoughts about sharing in the cost of a wall?
Well, we're fundamentally against the wall for the reasons we outlined above. You know, we're on a tight schedule, we have all of our permits already pending, we're set to close next Thursday, and what the wall does, any increase in cost, it's going to cut into our landscaping abilities. And on top of that, it puts us in an awkward situation because to the east is a complete unknown, and the next developer, he may have a completely different attitude about it, and then we've got a random wall on ours and nothing to the east of us. So our hope is that maybe we set the precedent of what landscaping should be, and that ends up being a better scenario. Because all the neighbors do have a wall.
No, I understand, I've driven by there quite often. My preference would be for a natural buffer, the landscaping. I think, would you mind placing this back up for the members of the council to look at? I think you're correct, and here's some of the comments, Eric, that were brought out. You know, you're concerned, you need a buffer with respect to lighting and noise. The parking outside of the employees, which will not be that many, is up front along southwest 104th Street. I don't see noise being a...
I thought I saw parking spaces on the south.
For the employees.
Only the employees.
Yeah, and so the guests will be along 104th Street, which has plenty of noise in and of itself, it's a high-traffic-use street. And again, I think it's going to enhance the appearance of that part of the city with that amount of landscaping. I'd hate to see that reduced just to satisfy, you know, the people's concern, and as you mentioned, they already have fences and walls along their backyards. I don't see, really, we're adding a whole lot by requiring a wall in this instance, and to do it and to take away landscaping, to me, doesn't make sense.
So what they're saying then, in effect, Councilman, is, "We're not going to give you both." That's what he's saying, "We're not going to give you both landscaping and wall." You know, if you force us to do a wall, then we're going to do less landscaping.
Correct.
Well, whatever situation they find themselves in, they put themselves there. You know, if they're on a tight schedule, that's their problem, and what we're looking for is continuity all the way across the southern border of the Schaefer's property, because we know the rest of it's going to get developed at some point, and we're willing to talk about cost sharing on the wall, but we just rule it out altogether. You know, landscaping can be difficult too, Councilman, you know, the weather, and we have ice storms around here that can wreck landscaping, so there's no assurance that it's going to accomplish the things that a wall might.
David, I've never heard a response with respect to the cost sharing of a wall.
Well...
And if you need more time, I mean, we can set this aside and then come back at the end of the meeting.
But we'd be willing to talk to them, but we don't want to agree to anything because we believe it'll be problematic in that we'd be agreeing to share costs with the neighborhood who's going to have to get, from what we understand, 100% of the neighborhood on board to expend funds on behalf of an HOA, so it creates all these moving parts that puts my client in a bind on development of the parcel.
That's not true, we don't need 100% to spend, we spend money on things all the time, it doesn't take 100% of them.
And it gets...
He's a treasurer, he can tell you.
And it gets back, it gets back to the same principle, spending money on that is going to reduce the ability to do anything else. We just, we don't think it's a good solution for the side.
I agree. I mean, I think, in a sense, some of the members of the Homeowners Association are attempting to be punitive with respect to the unknown associated with the adjacent property. If you look at this in and of itself, I think it actually enhances the appearance of that part of the city. In a sense, that isolated house in the middle of 11 acres looks a little odd. To me, there's no other way of describing it. This actually fits in, blends in well with respect to the neighborhood. I don't see it being a high intense use, I don't see noise being a problem. The light, hopefully, it actually helps, you know, if anything, to make it a safer environment, the more light that may be brought into a situation. But I don't see lights from automobiles coming in and out being a problem, because, you know, unfortunately, many of these residents are going to struggle to find a person that will come by and visit them, you know, as much as once a week. I just haven't seen these types of facilities actually create a problem to the surrounding neighborhood. In fact, it's just the opposite, I think it improves the neighborhood. If you can, if both parties can reach an agreement, at this point in time, we can address the issue of that sharing of the cost of the wall. I don't feel inclined to place that responsibility solely on the developer at this time.
Can I make a brief question?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
So just briefly, the way it's been spoken about in terms of perspective, when you look at the map that was up here earlier, we keep talking about everybody has a fence in their backyard. If you look at the orientation of our house, the house that's just across the street from us, you will see, I have to orient myself, you will see that when we walk out of our house toward the street, Greenbrier Chase, living there at the north end, we will look into that, we will look into that property. We do not have a back fence buffering us from that.
Well, the street doesn't, I understand, but I'm talking in terms of a person's backyard.
Right, but I would like some security from that property, I would like to have people not coming in and out that way.
Let me ask a question, excuse me, on that, and I'm not dismissing that issue. Is that going to be what's considered a breakthrough gate of fire? Will that gate still be there?
We're going to remove, as far as what's on our property, we will remove all the paving and the gate as it falls on ours.
Do you have a requirement, you know, to where you have an alternative access by the fire department?
No, not on this.
Okay, so that'll just come directly from 104th Street?
Yeah, we only need the one.
Okay, so with respect to the concern about the street, that will be completely closed, no access?
It's our belief that because we'll remove the paving and where you see our property line kind of cuts that street in half, that if somebody did develop to the east, I don't know that they could actually meet the city code to connect a street through, it'd have to be a substandard street, but it's our intention to cut off all access, and if we, if our property line went further east, we would, but I don't think, I don't think this will permit, once this is done, a city standard street cutting through there.
Okay, final time to ask the question, are both parties willing to share in the cost of the wall?
We're willing to talk to them about it, but we don't want it hinged on this application because it could get in some long, drawn-out discussion, as long as we all understand, if the answer is, sure, we could help, it will reduce the landscaping. But we're willing to sit down and talk about it, but we need this application to continue to go forward.
All right, now, Eric...
We have 30 minutes, Councilman. If you can move on and put us down the docket a little further, we could talk.
Your Honor, would that be okay for them to come back?
Sure.
Okay, so that's the remaining issue, is the wall and the sharing of the cost.
Take her down to the wall, Councilman.
Okay.
Backs against the wall, Councilman.
Barry Woods, again, we seem to be ignoring the elephant in the room, which is the owner of this property, the owner of this...
The owner of this property is the developer of this property, not Autumn Leaves. They don't own it. They're in here trying to get a SPUD so that they can purchase it and do their project. The owner is the one who is going to be the beneficiary monetarily of a great deal of money by changing this from an R1 to whatever it is. They should be the developer who is responsible for the improvements of that fence. It shouldn't be laid on Autumn Leaves. It shouldn't be laid on somebody in the future. It should be laid upon the owner of that property if he wants to change this from an R1 to do what is necessary to get isolation between what he is suggesting and what exists today.
Thank you.
You want to defer the item for 30 seconds or 30 minutes? Okay. Francis, what do we need to do to have this come up later?
We'll just hold it.
Okay. We'll just move on in the council agenda and then come back to them. All right. We're on to item 8A7, which is a zoning case in Ward 2 at 4301 North May Avenue. It's currently a SPUD, and it would become a new SPUD. Ed?
This is to, anybody here to speak on this? All right. This is to develop a parking lot for a Sam's. I'm going to move for approval.
Okay. Anyone here today hoping to speak on item 8A7? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A8, this is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 2421 South I-35 Service Road. It's currently a SPUD and an AE2 Airport Environ Zone District. And it would become a new simplified plan unit development. And John, we have one person that signed up to speak.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can we hear, is the applicant present? Is the applicant present? My name is Greg Mullman with Mullman's Culligan Water, one of the owners of the property.
Can you please explain the development?
Well, we had done this once before, and we had it all approved, but somehow in the wording, they changed it to where it said we were not allowed to have an approach on the new zoning property. But we were definitely wanting to have an approach come off of the service road, the I-35 service road for the said property. We have one approach now, but the reason for the second approach is to, actually, for safety's sake, we have many semi-trailers pull in there with 48-foot trailers, and many times they have to back in or back out. And there's a, the service exit off of the I-35 is just right prior to this property. And the cars, quite honestly, they do not slow down like you would need them to. And it's actually quite hazardous the way it is because these trucks were, actually have to sit there and block all three lanes of the service road, which, you know, and you got the traffic coming, zooming right off the highway, right prior to this.
So people, the trucks will come through 24th Street?
No, no, that part's the neighborhood. There's a service road on I-35. And it's a one-way service road heading south. So trucks would either be coming down that service road, or, I mean, the trucks that are coming to us are coming down the service road. They're not exiting off the highway because in order for them to exit from the highway to our property, they would have to cross all three lanes of traffic on the service road immediately to pull into our property. So the trucks are coming down the service road from, say, southeast 15th Street. And then, once they get to our property, they have to back in. And when they're backing in, they jackknife and they block all three lanes of traffic. And in the meantime, you've got traffic coming off the highway, and they're having to abruptly come to a stop. And there is times where we actually had to drive a forklift out onto the service road to unload a truck. And when you do so, you've got these cars coming off the highway, and you're actually fearing for your life at times, the way they come off of there.
All right. Thank you. Can we, are you finished? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. Can we hear from the protester?
He is who signed up.
Oh, he is. Okay, okay. All right. Thank you. I move for approval.
All right. We're voting on item 8A8. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8B is our changes to the building code. This has been introduced and discussed at previous council meetings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on item 8B today? Looks like we're ready to go. How about a motion?
I have a, I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
Are we going to be voting on the amendment separately? We are.
Okay. We'll be voting on each one of them separately.
Okay.
All right. So the first motion, then, is for 8B1. Do we have a second? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Do we have a motion on item 8B2? All right. Cast your votes. Passes 81. And now we're voting on item 8B3. Do we have a motion? Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. We're on to item 8C. And this is for changes to our fire code. Go ahead, Jim. This is how it ends up for final hearing today.
It is. And at the instruction of the council last time, staff met with some of the interested parties, and I think there's some proposed amendments. I think I actually met last Friday. Okay?
Good morning, Council, Mayor. As requested, industry and their legal representatives and the city Fire Marshal's Office and Legal met with them last Friday, and it was a very productive and successful meeting. Some reciprocal education, if you will, occurred. They had three primary concerns, and we were able to address those with some minor changes to the resolution as was presented to you back last week. Their first concern, we were able to address because it was maybe to slow the process of adoption down, and that was, we explained the process to them, and they're okay with that now. The changes to the resolution itself are very minimal. And if you're looking at that resolution, it'll be item 14 to section 105.6.45.1. We would completely remove item number two, which addresses airbags and mercury switches. We were educated as to the airbags not being a source of the explosions, and that the mercury switches are actually addressed in the Oklahoma City Storm Water Quality Permit, and they have to be removed by those requirements there. So we struck number two completely. That would be a change we would ask for you to consider. Item number five, in that, those, that resolution under section 105.6.45.1 clarifies the reporting requirements by the industry and those sites that have the operational permit as to who they report to, and that they maintain a log on site. It also will establish requirements for the Fire Marshal's Office to set up how they would report, and our discussion really was a fax at this point. The other concern they had was about the hours of operation. Our initial resolution restricted the hours of operation from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Industry representatives explained to us that sometimes during the, certain times of the year, peak electrical rates can, are very, it impacts them very significantly. So we included a sentence in that requirement that would allow the Fire Marshal's Office to adjust those hours of operation on a, not permanent basis. So our discussion was that, you know, that would be like 5:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And it would give us the opportunity to allow them to do that when those rates impacted them the most. The other thing was the enforcement procedures. That was a concern of theirs, and we explained that process to them. And I think we're all okay with that at this point.
Okay. Well, we have some people that have signed up to speak, so I want them to stand by, and we'll see where this goes. Denyetta Davis?
Denyetta Davis, 721 North Kellam. I'm representing the John F. Kennedy Neighborhood Association. This is my third time speaking to you on behalf of this resolution. This is an important thing for our Neighborhood Association. I know maybe to you, this may be just another item on the agenda, or it may just be something that you need to discuss, or something that you need to vote on and just move on to something else. But to us, this ordinance, the passage of this ordinance will be life-changing. We had a boom this morning about 6:20. And we know that, because there've been a lapse in time and when they have occurred, that they can stop. And the quality of our life has been affected, and we don't know what long-term affects the, to our health. It's an environmental issue. It's a safety issue. It's a quality of life issue. And we urge you to pass this resolution and ordinance today. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Pardue?
And we do appreciate the opportunity that we did have last Friday, the 21st, to get together. And this was a collaborative effort. And Patrick Ryan, I think, deserves a lot of credit for asking the city manager to help facilitate this collaborative effort that Stacy mentioned of the Standard Metals ask that you do when we met on February 11th. The misunderstanding that the industry has with the Fire Marshal is strictly related to the hours of operation. When we left that meeting last Friday, we thought that all the parties in the room agreed that we could operate from 5:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and shut it down at 5:00 p.m. We want, what happens is, is that Bath Avenue is a north-south street that intersects with Reno, and then it stops and it crosses the railroad tracks, and it picks up again a few blocks north and becomes a paved street. But it's a, it's a gravelled, dusty road, and the, and our business, our vendors, our customers start coming into Bath Avenue before 5:00 a.m., and they line up, semis and other pickups and whatever, they line up and are ready to roll and ready to start bringing in the recyclable metals at 5:00 a.m. Running this operation from 5:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. is far preferable to us than beginning at 7:00 a.m. and stopping at 7:00 p.m. It would be much better for the community and much better for Dersberg Recycling, in particular, my client, for us to shut down at 5:00 p.m. and not have our shredders operating from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. It's much better if we start at 5:00 a.m.
I hear you. I get it.
We, we went back and researched. There is one concussive event, one explosion, every 81 days between 5:00 a.m. and...
And that's based on complaints?
That's based upon our own records.
Okay.
Our own records. So it's a lot better for us, and I can't imagine the citizens wanting to have us running from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. as opposed to running from 5:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. So we were convinced that that was the deal that we had. Apparently, we were wrong. I do agree that we did discuss, if we needed to, we would come to the Fire Marshal and say, we've got a special situation during this particular period of time. Can we change it so that we can reduce it down to 5:00 a.m.? So we would ask that it be 5:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. instead of the way it's written now.
But your data shows, your data shows 80, every 81 days, a concussive event from 5:00 a.m. to what?
7:00 a.m.
Just in those two hours, you're having a concussive event every 81 days?
Every, our average is three concussive events per month. Okay? So what we're talking about is, is every 81 days, there's a concussive event between 5:00 a.m. and 7:00 a.m. That's acceptable. This is not a zero-tolerance business. There are 288 shredders in the United States. Not one of them, not one of them can operate at shredders with no concussions. It's impossible. We're the biggest operation in the world. We know about these things. It is absolutely impossible, today's technology, to completely eliminate every single possible explosion. 5:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. is a much better opportunity for the community than us running it from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Please consider this very carefully.
Okay. Ron Walters?
I need to introduce myself again. Some, some interesting situations. I'm listening to generator noise, everything else. This is a picture my part-time sales lady takes after she hears a boom and runs out in the yard, walks over to the next yard, and takes a picture down the road. You can see the smoke and everything else that's going on there. We're talking about generator noise. Try having your pictures racked off your wall from seven blocks away. We have one of those stupid little sticker things, they open and shut on the front window of our model home, knocked off continually. Bricktown Hotel has had windows broke. The Housing Authority has had their clients jump on the ground thinking it was another mural building accident. This is my part-time sales lady's lead tracker. The Homeowners Association has significant deal. Now, he's got one every 81 days. I've got 39 in a year and a half from my part-time salesperson. I've got photos to go with it. You know, we even took the picture on the, one of the cameras that the Housing Authority took, pointed their camera out. We got video of this stuff, the flashes, the sparks, the blow up, the whole deal. It got so difficult down there. The situation is so hard to catch, so hard to help everybody. And I apologize that we've literally got to drag our fire department in to deal with this situation. It's that bad. These guys have successfully slept through the cracks of every governing agency, every set of rules, zoning, that could be dealt with. Housing Authority and me split the cost of having Entercon do a noise level survey. Obviously, there's millions of bits of information here. I can't print it all off. We only paid for a 30-day period. Cost us 2,600 bucks. The Housing Authority, where they set up the equipment, is 450 yards away to their south property line. That's four and a half football fields, guys. They sampled between 7:00 and 9:00. They used 30-day sampling period. They were looking for impulse, impulse, impulse noise, excuse me. 15 decibels or higher. I won't go into the details of tonadas and hearing loss and all this stuff. You know, standard businesses are, at 85 decibels, they're required to have a, I'll read this off, a hearing conservation program. Give you all a little relation of that, because I know we don't know decibels. A bulldozer, which I deal with all the time, is 68 decibels. I'll just read this, it's the highlight, fine print. Noise levels over the course of this study routinely exceeded 85 decibels at the south fence line, and at times exceeded 145 decibels. And yes, we do have this documented, we do have it in writing. They were very, very careful, these guys. They even took, had two of their security guards, how does it say here, in their incident logs to verify these things, too. So this is no figment of anybody's imagination.
Ron, how many explosions, is the term I'm going to use, whether that's appropriate or not?
Booms is what we call them.
What'd you call it?
Booms.
Booms, okay. How many did they record in that time period that you had them monitor the sounds?
Oh, gosh. I'd have to read it. I'll be honest with you, this thing's been done a year or so ago. I'm going to say in the 40 area or something. It's spread, it, guys. Sometimes it happens once a week, sometimes it happens once every three weeks, sometimes you got two in a day. You know, it's all, and that's what's so hard to catch. Nobody, we're not going to send anybody over there to sit forever. That's why we hired the impulse equipment. As for this collaborative effort, this was our last collaborative effort. This is the sign-in sheet for everybody that's sat in that conference room right there. We had city attorneys, Mr. Pardue, people from Standard I. We had licensing, code enforcement, Mr. Locke, two of his people there, the JFK president at that time, Councilman Kelly, the Housing Authority, Dirch and Board Recycling, you know, so on. That was a real collaboration, you know, that we tried to settle this. I even picked up the phone and called Mr. Pardue afterwards and said, are you hearing us? This is not going to stand. This is not going to go away. We're going to continue to follow this. Now we're to this point right here, that we've had to drag this thing all the way in front of this body. How could we allow an industry to be so irresponsible in this city, to terrorize the neighborhoods and the surrounding businesses with this type of affairs? Now, these guys don't get anything but money. I don't know if there's a fine element involved with this or not, but until it becomes, the fine is more expensive than the fix to their manufacturing problem, or whatever they're doing there, I don't know. I'm sure there's a way of remedying it. But until the fine becomes more expensive than the fix, they're not going to do a thing. They're going to continue to dodge it, water it down, play the games, and continue on with this garbage. This is ridiculous.
Ron, what do you, what do you want us to do? Are you speaking in favor of this?
Are, are you speaking in favor of this ordinance?
Yes, we definitely need to vote in the ordinance, and I don't think we need to water it down.
Okay. I'm, I'm just confused.
I'm sorry.
Know what you wanted.
All right. Thanks, Ron.
Like I said, and I apologize for being so emotional on this thing. I just, I, I can't not believe this thing has come to this point and drug on this farce.
All right. Mary Ellen turns.
I'm being a little...
Okay. Thanks.
With that said, I move for approval.
I guess, I, I guess I just have a question, because it seemed like last time, when our friend from the industry was here, he said that this was a minimal occurrence, that it hadn't been documented, that we didn't have the data, that we didn't know how often it was, that... And now, we have, we have specific numbers, which is the first time we've heard, which is 288 events or three events a month, three concussive events. I mean, that's the industry telling us that their number, I'm not sure where those numbers were before and why we're just now hearing them. But if there's three concussive events a month, one between 5:00 and 7:00 a.m. every 81 days, I guess, do we know what percent are from fuel tanks not being removed? Do we know, when, when the company's documenting these three concussive events every month, are they, is there a log of what happened, what caused the concussive event? Do we have data like that?
Yes, sir.
I don't think that there is one concussive...
Come, come on back up.
As far as I know, there's not one concussive event that's ever happened, to my knowledge, from a gas tank that wasn't removed from a car. 90% of these concussive, and, and by the way, when we met last Friday, the fire marshal's staff had done a lot of independent research and contacted other municipalities and other departments that have been addressing the same issues. And they came up with their own additional research to find out, for example, that, yes, you're right, it is impossible for us to, for, for the shredding business to completely eliminate these, as, as Mr. Walters calls it, booms or concussive events or explosions. The biggest problem that we have is finding a small Coleman, I'll call it Coleman, gas propane container. We brought one to our meeting Friday. It's about this big. It's, it's smaller than Mayor Cornet's cup. Those things get hidden in these, in these big containers, pickup trucks, refrigerators, already compressed and crushed cars, because you make money if you can shove those pieces of metal in there and hide them. Those things, when those things get crushed, they make a boom. It lasts a second, two seconds. The bigger ones are easy to catch because we can spot them. We're designed to make money by not having these things go off because they wreck our equipment and they upset our neighbors. So we don't like it. The biggest problem we have is these little ones that still make a big, huge noise. So the, the question that you had was, is that how do we know that there's one every 81 days? What we do is, is we have a guy whose sole job is to inspect every single load and keep a record of it. And if there's something in there he doesn't like, he shuts down everything and goes and finds it and rejects the load. And he fines, the company, Dersberg, fines the company that brought it in $500. The ones that get passed have to independently certify, under oath, not under oath, they have to certify, sign off on a document saying that those things don't exist. So when we are in operation and something goes off, we make a record of it and we have a calendar of it. Now, the new regulations and ordinances are going to strengthen that and require much more detailed reporting of every single incident so that we immediately tell the fire marshal what happened. And then, if there is an independent report from a neighbor, that, that report from the neighbor will come together with the report that we gave the fire marshal. And the fire marshal will conduct an investigation. And we can get cited for it under these new rules and regulations.
So it's just, my memory is that, is that you were telling us last time that the problem was that cars had been partially compressed and that fuel tanks were getting through and that it was the fuel tanks that were exploding. And now...
No. Fuel tanks, as, I'm talking, when you say fuel tanks, I'm hearing gas tanks.
Right.
Okay? Which is what goes into the engine, you know, gasoline. I didn't, I, I want to make it real clear. It's real easy for us to catch gas tanks. You get a gas tank in a car, you cut it in half, you split it open, and there's no problem with it. Fuel tanks are really the cylinders that, every once in a while, we can't find them. We hate it, but we, sometimes we can't find them. Dagum thing blows up and it scares us, it scares everybody else, and sometimes it damages equipment. We'd like nothing better than to, somebody to come up with a technology to where we could catch these things, we never have that problem again. The biggest problem is that salvage yards, not us, but salvage yards, junk yards, can crush cars, stack them up, stack them up, stack them up, put them on semis, bring them down Bath Avenue, and they're stacked up eight high, and they're already crushed from this high to this high. And it's real hard for us to dig through and find. They have to sign off. Last week, one of these big, one of the biggest businesses that there is brought in a load of cars, and we still found 12 of those containers. We rejected those guys and made them pay a $500 fine.
But did, did you have this data about the incidents, that it was three every month, last time you spoke with us? Did you know how...
I had a calendar, I had a calendar showing that it was about three every month, yes. And if I didn't share it with you, I apologize.
Now, a quick question. Will you make those calendars and the logs available to city staff?
Absolutely. It's even better than that for you. We have to actually give those logs to the fire marshal. That's part of that ordinance that says the reporting requirements. We have to submit those to the, and what's going to happen is, is if those logs don't match up with one of your constituents' reports, there's going to be an issue. And we're going to have to address it. Because she's going to call us on the carpet and say, "What's the difference between what Councilman Pettis's constituent says and your report says?" So we're going to be very, very careful in, in making a full disclosure and report because we stand to lose. And we stand to lose to you, too.
Mr. Pardue, you were bringing up the hours of operation that were in this amendment. I'll, I'll read it, and I want, I want you to either sign off or, or tell us that you don't agree. It says, "Hours of operations of shredding, crushing, or compacting equipment are limited to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Temporary exceptions to the starting time may be granted by the fire code official, but hours of operations shall not be permitted before 5:00 a.m., nor be conducted more than 12 hours in a single day."
Yes. The temporary exception allowing us to drop back from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. is problematic because we don't know the future that well. We would have to guess, one of the things has to do with OGNP peak rates, but other than that, we would have to guess what the future is going to be for the next four months and go to the fire marshal and say, "Can we drop this down from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m.?" And have that discussion. Maybe they would agree with us, maybe they wouldn't agree with us. I love the idea that we at least have the opportunity to come to them and say, "Let's go from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m." But wouldn't it be much simpler for the fire marshal and for us to just be able to do what we've been doing for the last eight years? We run from 5:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Let me see. Is, is the change he's requesting, is that problematic for us?
Well, we took into consideration the neighbors in the area, you know, they, this operation can run seven days a week, whether they choose to or not, there's no limitation there. You know, 5:00 a.m. boom, once every 81 days or whatever, between 5:00 a.m. and 7:00 a.m. for the neighbors on Saturday and Sunday morning, might not be as preferable as, as the option of later in the day. However, we did discuss their, their time period that they kind of look at, and it's generally April, May-ish to October. And correct me if I'm wrong. At, our discussion was that we probably wouldn't have a big issue with that, but that we did want to have that, that flexibility in there for them.
So you're going to have discretion to be able to prohibit those early-hour operations? If you're getting complaints, or you sense that, that there are explosions taking place before dawn and those...
Well, I, I don't think we would take any action unless we had something to justify it. But, you know, they come to me next, in April and say, well, first off, the ordinance wouldn't be effective till May. They come to me and say, "Okay, we really need to go to that 5:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. 12-hour time period. We're not going to have a big issue with that." This gives us something concrete and then the flexibility to offer a change when necessary for their business reasons.
So let's say you do offer that exception to 5:00 a.m., and then there are booms that take place...
Well, like they said, I don't think we're going to be able to cease all booms. It's, it could, it could occur, but their diligence and these other requirements will help to reduce those. It may or may not be a reason to change the hours because they're still going to happen. We'll, we'll just take it case by case.
John, any comments?
No further comment. And my motion is to approve with the amendment.
Okay.
Let me, let me ask you a question about this. Are you saying that they could come to you the first of May and ask for, say, May through October, to go from 5:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.? And you'd, and not just day by day? Because I think one of the things he's, he's saying is that he doesn't want to have to guess which day this happens in.
We would put that on their permit. They come to me May 1st, when this ordinance goes into effect, and say, "We really need to go into that 5:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. schedule for the summertime hours." We would say, "Yes."
Okay. All right. Thank you both.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Procedurally, we need a motion. Do you want to go back and do 8B?
Yeah.
Okay. Backing up one issue, under 8B, Francis says we need the emergency on that. Looks like there's enough here to do that. This is the, this was the building code. Do we need it on 1, 2, and 3, Francis?
Just on 1.
Okay. So we need the emergency on 8B1, and this was the building code issue.
Second.
Cast your votes. So emergency passes 9-0. Now, we're on to the issue that we've been discussing. And so if we vote on item, you want to vote on the amendment first?
Yes.
Okay. Let's vote on the amendment that are listed in the packet that the council's had.
I move for approval with the amendment.
All right. You want to vote on it separately?
Yes.
Okay. Let's vote on the amendment then separately. So the motion and the second are on the amendment. All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And then, now we'll vote on item 8C1.
As amended.
As amended.
Okay. I move for approval with the amendment.
Okay. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And then on to item 8C2. Is that correct? All right. With no amendment?
No.
There's no amendment?
Just ordinance and then the emergency.
Okay. We'll vote first on the ordinance on item 8C2.
Move for approval.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Now we need the emergency on item 8C2.
Move for approval with the emergency.
Cast your votes, and the emergency passes 9-0.
Thank you.
And now we're on to item 83. Same thing, we'll vote it first, and then we'll vote the emergency.
I move for the approval.
Okay. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now the emergency on item 8C3.
I move for approval with the emergency.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Thank you all. Ron, we're on to item 8D. This is a public hearing today. It's the second time this item's been before council. Is there anyone here that showed up hoping to speak to item 8D? All right. Motion and a second to move it forward. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8E is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. We have one person that signed up to speak, Joe Sarge Nelson.
Joe Sarge Nelson, Oklahoma City. If you'll excuse me, I've got to get my eyes on here. Got some stuff dilation. Anyway, I'm making reference to item E at 3221 Northwest 24th Street, fence and a house. And that dilapidated structure there, there's a lot of rotted wood and things of that nature. As far as the fence and the roofing, it's, it's way out. And on the other item is an F, the unsecured structures, which is 2104 Northeast 28th Street. It is a house. And both of these I looked at, and we have a system that is controlled and operated by the city of Oklahoma City, preferably. They come before the council periodically. And it's mainly the neighborhood housing structures or housing services on 13th. Of course, that's why I'm here today, making reference to this city's varied houses, like the two I just mentioned and the pictures you just saw. Up until now, many of the structures like these go ignored or left abandoned, and in doing so, has left the varied neighborhoods of all awards in a plaque, in a plague, and describes the neighborhoods, that draws homeless vagrants, as you call them, and along with it, some rogue animals. Now, my idea is, I know two of the council people here on, in the past, in Ward 3 and Ward 4, have spoke about the numerous houses. Neighborhood housing services, of which I became aware of and involved in a number of years ago, their gentleman at that time was named Jeff Kolesky. I think he started it. And what they do is they send the city's crews out, and what they do is they evaluate the structure to see if it's worth saving. And it doesn't cost a whole lot. Then the city, in turn, buys the property, puts it back up to reform, and then sells it or puts it up on the market for sale to the general public. It serves a good entity for the Oklahoma City because it services the neighborhoods. Problems that were, very rarely arise, where people will come in, they're checked out by the city, they're rules, they have a set standards, and they put citizens in there. And altogether, we've got working people, families that are in these structures, and the owner of the property is, they recover rarely nicely, I assume. I don't know anything about that. But then again, the city does a good job with it at the same time. And that was the only reason I was here today, is mainly because of these two things, because we did have two councilmen that were concerned about it. And I have built these structures some years back over on Northwest 30th and Chertel. In fact, it was five structures, two duplexes, and an apartment complex, all owned by the city. And it served a good purpose. And all of them are still occupied to this day. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Do we have a motion on item 8E?
Second.
Okay. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We're on to item 8F, and this is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on item 8F? All right. How about a motion?
Second.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8G is a public hearing. And is this a budget amendment, Jim?
It is. Craig, do you want to come up and describe it? Or Doug?
Yes, thank you. This is a budget amendment. It has several funds that we are mending. One of them is the debt service fund, that each year, we develop our budget based upon the estimates that we have on the debt service fund, and then it goes to the county excise board. And once it's finalized, then we'll come back with an amendment. It just makes an adjustment on a few of the numbers in the budget. The firefighting, and it's a public safety sales tax, a 3/4 cent sales tax, the portion for fire services. There's an amendment to use fund balance for the purchase and replacement of the self-contained breathing apparatus. In the hotel tax fund, there's an amendment that allows the use of $1 million of fund balance for some improvements, for cash funding, some improvements, and addressing some ADA issues at the fairgrounds. And then in the medical services program, there's an amendment that allows, back in November, there was a situation where there was some funds transferred from the general fund into the emergency management, or the medical services program, to be able to help it with cash flow during that period, or transfer over to IMSA to help with cash flow during that period. And then, this is a transfer, to allow for a transfer back. to allow for a transfer back of those funds.
And that's no new net money, that's just a, a cash flow issue.
That was just a cash flow issue, and this allows for moving the money back. In transportation and parking enterprise, that's, covers the administrative costs for COPPA, and the costs were a little bit higher with the changeover in staffing, with the director's retirement. And so this just allows additional funding in there. And in total, it's an increase of $9.5 million for the, for the budget as a whole.
Okay, thanks, Greg. Comments, your questions on this budget amendment? Okay, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And we're on to item 8H. It's a series of revocable right-of-way permits. We have some people that have signed up to speak. The first one for the council to consider is DG Productions' request to hold the Run Lucky 5K on March 16th. And Ed, we have, looks like the promoters of this event are here, Rick and Don.
Don Garrett, DG Productions, 14420 South Meridian.
Okay.
Rick Ailing, 833 Northwest 41st Street.
This is the fourth annual 5K and 1-mile run we have for friends of Leukemia Lymphoma Society. All the funds, all the proceeds go to those, that organization.
Okay. Ed, you okay with this?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, on to item 8H2, and this is a request in Ward 6 for Downtown OKC, Inc. to hold Sound Bites, which is an outdoor concert and a food truck lunch on March the 5th. And Elizabeth Newton is here.
Hi, Elizabeth Newton, 517 Northwest 48th Street. Downtown Oklahoma City Incorporated, next week will be producing Downtown Employee Appreciation Week. And so we do different events every day just to celebrate and thank the downtown employees. And so Wednesday of next week, we're going to be shutting down Robert S. Kerr Between Robinson and Harvey, going to have an outdoor concert, have some food trucks out there, and give free lunch to the downtown employees.
All right. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks and good luck. Okay. Item 8H3 is a request in Ward 4 from Oklahoma City Metro Alliance to hold the Strides of March Half Marathon and Dogwood-5K.
Hello, sorry. Hello.
Is this Taletha?
This is Taletha, yes. Taletha Guest. I'm Corporate Business Manager for OKC Metro Alliance, and I'm a Race Director for Strides of March Half Marathon and Dogwood-5K. We will be hosting an event on March 9th. It's a Half Marathon 5K, and the process, it's a fundraising event for OKC Metro Alliance's First Step programs. We have a longstanding partnership with the city of Oklahoma City, actually. And we've celebrated 40 years anniversary of service in the recovery community, and we partner with the city of Oklahoma City in many different ways and contracts, and so we thank you for that. By the way, Anne says hello. She's our executive director over there, so she wanted me to tell you hi. It's going to be March 9th, as I said before. We'll start 6 o'clock in the morning, we'll be finished with everything by 12 or 1, wrapping up. And the event actually starts at 8. The 5K starts at 8:15. And all proceeds for the event actually go towards the First Steps operational budget. We will be, the race will take place on Lake Stanley Draper Drive along the west side of the lake. It'll go out, it's an out-and-back course, goes around just past the bridge, and then back, starts at the marina over there. And we will be putting some barricades up at, at various locations. But the street won't actually fully close. We should be able to still get some through, through traffic. And we will have police officers or volunteers at those barricades.
All right. Thank you, Taletha. Pete?
I'd like to invite everybody to come out. The lake's full, hadn't been full in three or four years, and it's beautiful and great cause. And you'd also see, if you come out, you'd also see how bad I need some help in paving some roads out there. So I'd move, I'd move approval.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you all, good luck. Item 8H4 is a request from the Oklahoma Heritage Association to host the Oklahoma Heritage Land Run, and that'll be in Ward 6 on March 29th. And Shelley Rowan is here?
Rowan.
Did I, Rowan, I'm sorry.
Rowan. Shelley Rowan with the Oklahoma Heritage Association, 1400 Class C Drive. Our team board's hosting the third annual 10K, 5K, and 1-mile run, and it'll be the second time that the race course will go through Heritage Hills and Midtown. The proceeds will benefit the Oklahoma Heritage Association and Gaylord Pickens Museum for our free field trip program and our statewide scholarship program.
Thank you, Shelley. I love it that this is being done by the team board. They're really active, and they do great stuff. Thank you. Move approval.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Uh huh. All right, item 8H5 is a request from the Red Bud Foundation to hold the annual Red Bud Classic. Patty?
Hello, my name is Patty Anthony, 1708 Bedford Drive. I'm here to talk about the Red Bud Classic. It's going to be held April 5th and 6th. This is our 32nd annual event, welcoming spring to Oklahoma City. We're going to have bicycle tours on Saturday, 10:33 and 50 that leave from the Waterford Plaza out to Jones and back. And then we have running events on Sunday, 5K, 10K, and a 2-mile run, walk, stroller derby. We're benefiting the Annes House Foundation this year.
All right. I mean, it's in Ward 2 and 7. Ed, you want to make a motion? Okay, John? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Thank you. And item 8H6 is a request from the University of Oklahoma's College of Pharmacy Alumni Association. They're going to hold the RX 5K in Ward 7. And you must be Tim Anderson.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Your Honor. The RX 5K is going, we plan on holding it March 8th. It'll start about 9:00 AM. We'll have all of our cones and barricades generally picked up by, picked up by noon. This is our second annual event. It benefits the College of Pharmacy Foundation, which helps with scholarships and innovative programs at, at the university. And maybe at today's prices, we can buy maybe a book or two on, on the, on.
All right, we're voting on item 8H6. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thanks.
Thank you. Item 8I is a resolution that approves a citywide policy about the acceptance and use of donations to the city.
Mayor, Councilman Ryan asked that we pursue this. We had a donation several months ago that had a lot of strings attached. Shoot, it was some stock that couldn't be, it couldn't be redeemed for 70 years or something, 50 years or something like that, and it had a lot of strings. Pat suggested that it may be more costly for us to administer this, this donation than really the value thereof. And so we spent some time looking at other cities for some best practices along those lines and have developed a donation policy.
All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Item 8I passed unanimously. I understand the two sides on a previous item that we viewed, 8, 6, have kind of returned. And David, you want to tell us what you've decided?
We're back. Your Honor, thank you. What we, what we've done is we went out and talked in the hall, and when the topic of the fence came up, then it was brought to our attention that several of the neighbors wanted to then remove their fence and have the new fence be their permanent fence. And that creates a problem for my client because now we've got a quiet title suit on who owns that one foot, half a foot, whatever it is. And then the neighborhood to the west said, well, what about us? So what my, what my client is willing to do is to donate $10,000 to a general fund for a fence that is contingent upon both the west and the south coming to an agreement, signing some sort of contract with the contractor, constructing the fence. There's no other way we can see making a fence work with 17 different opinions. But we're willing to contribute $10,000 contingent upon this thing going forward within 60, 90 days, just an agreement, 60, 90 days, built on the property line, so we avoid the, the strip of dead man land. But outside of that, I don't see another way to do it. We could have conversations for the next year and have, you know, various opinions. I think this is the best way to put the neighborhood in a position to where, both neighborhoods, to where they can move forward with the wall with $10,000 start.
All right. Eric?
Well, we really need to continue this for a week so that we can talk a couple things. One, St. Andrews has not been a player in this until today. We haven't really had a chance to talk to them at all, number one. Number two, that business about quiet title, I think that's a lot of bunk. I've never heard, I don't know of any property dispute that would lead to quiet title litigation. We're interested in their $10,000. We need to talk to our board and, and see what our board is willing to do. So we need a week, and if we can't work it out in a week, then you just have to decide one way or the other.
You want to come back up and discuss that, not that you can speak for the, your four neighbors, but you're the only one here, and you were representing the property on the west side. What'd, what'd you think of the conversation that took place?
Several problems. I've been engaged since the beginning, but of this, so that remark makes me a little nervous. The, the other thing is, the $10,000, that isn't, you're talking 17 pieces of property that you got a fence or a wall. That's not even going to put a dent in that. And the other, the other problem is, sir, is I don't, I guess I just don't understand why we've got all this new development around the city where these great developers and these great businesses, i.e. the Walmarts, the smaller grocery stores, many new assisted living units over in our, on the south side are being built, and these walls are being placed up as dividers. And nobody seems to have a problem with that. There doesn't seem to be any legal issues with it. They do it as, as good stewards of the land and of the property and separation between residential and business. I'm just a little confused why it's such a big issue here, other than money.
Yeah. No, I, I think you expressed your point very well. Thanks for, for coming back.
Thank you.
Yeah.
David, does the one week of parole create a problem for you?
It's problematic in that we were set to close next week, and we need to move forward with, with our permits. And from our perspective, you know, that's, that's what our offer is, whether they agree to it or not. We hope they agree to it, and they can move forward with doing it. And if they don't agree to it in a week, it doesn't change anything about our offer or the merits of the application.
Let me ask you this, clarify a question. You would still have the same level of landscaping as?
Here, Mike, Mike.
You would still have the same level of landscaping that you presented, and you would also contribute $10,000 towards the cost of a fence?
Yes, as of now, yes. Anything more than that, and that's why we've, we've capped it at the 10, so we can still maintain the, the level of landscape. So we, we think that's the best solution.
Okay. I have a preference for the natural buffer in the form of landscaping as a form, as, as opposed to just a wall. All of the homes currently have a wall. Some of them are concrete or brick. I don't see an advantage other than from the appearance as it relates to the entire homeowners association to have a, a similar-looking wall around their property. I understand that. I'm, I'm not sure the developer on this three acre has responsibility to contribute to that beyond what they're offering as far as $10,000 to maintain that consistency as far as a wall that doesn't currently exist. So based upon that, I would move for approval with the added provision that you would pay up to $10,000 towards the cost of the wall or fencing. And otherwise, it's, it's recommended approval based upon the, the, the item as it's currently being presented.
That's correct. And I, I'm sorry. And I do want to make clear that, you know, the, the $10,000 is contingent upon that wall actually being built. I mean, if they don't build the wall, then we're obviously not going to give the $10,000.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes.
Of course, that language would be put in the PUD design statement, Councilman, right?
Correct.
Mr. Box would write that. You'd put that in there, wouldn't you, David?
Yeah, with the timeline we discussed and the boundary.
And the $10,000 comes to my HOA, right, David?
Nope. I said specifically, it's a general fund for the wall for the south and the west.
Oh, $10,000, wow. Got to be impressed with that.
I'd like to make a final comment. You know, I think there's a lot of emotion addressed to the possible development, and it really needs to be focused more so on the remaining seven acres. I think the developer in this instance, on these three acres to the east, has gone beyond normal expectations with respect to landscaping, with the detention pond, with trying to make it as nice of an addition to the area as possible. And to vent or focus frustration on some of the other areas, I think is unwarranted in this case. I don't see this as being intrusive, being problematic, but yet it's trying to be portrayed as such.
Okay. Jim, make a final comment?
Yes, I do. If this goes through with the amendments that you're offering, essentially what's going to happen is that piece of property is going to be divided off, separated from the rest of it. And when it comes to requiring a wall across the neighborhood, we will have absolutely no leverage at all in taking care of the fence around that property. Now, you think that this has been done. Like, I understand Autumn Lee's saying, we'll, we'll give $10,000. That's probably very generous on their part, considering that they've already got a contract on the table. The funds for that fence really needs to come from the Schaefer family, who is in fact the developer of this property. They are being ignored in this whole thing. They are the beneficiaries of several millions of dollars over what that inheritance would have been for that piece of property, for what they're asking to sell for. And we're talking a pittance here to the wrong people. This should be denied and sent back for a spud on the entire area, and the developer, the Schaefer family, made to provide what is required by the neighborhood.
Dennis, I'm going, I'm going to second your motion with this, with this comment. I would like to see us also institute some kind of a study or something that has to do with the water. I think that one, that we talked about what the elephant in the room is. The elephant in the room is really the water. And, and that, that water problem is a result of years of, of the city granting exemptions from the, from the, from the retention requirements.
Correct.
And we bought that problem.
No, I understand. And, I'm sorry, I was getting ready to say Councilman Groves.
Not anymore.
Mr. Groves has provided information related to that, and I've already requested people in public services to begin looking at that. So it's a separate matter.
Yes.
It needs to be investigated. It needs to be looked at. But to penalize this three acres to the west, I think is inappropriate. And, and I agree. I think the city needs to investigate it, and we are already beginning to do that. And hopefully, with that statement, that will eliminate some of the frustration that's being exhibited.
We did not bring, there is, that's part of the frustration, Councilman, you're correct. We did not bring that up as part of this case, Councilman, because it's a, it's a broader problem. And it goes beyond the detention pond that they're going to put in, or the detention pond that Sprouts would put in, too. The problem is much bigger than that. And one of the parts of the problem is our fee in lieu of detention policy, which Councilman Greenwell and I have discussed, and he's taking a look at it right now. That's something for another day, I think, not this project.
Okay.
But my concern is, we keep talking about the, the other seven acres, what's going to happen.
Yes.
That, that's got to happen before you do, before anybody talks about developing that second, second.
I, I agree. I agree.
There's no, and, and there's enough land that the homeowners association owns, and the seven acres is large enough, they're agreeing to out, oversize their thing. There's enough land there to fix that problem. We need to make sure we do it.
Yeah, there, there is a question as to where, you know, the creek that runs through Greenswood has, or Kingswood has been severely eroded. And what we're taking a look at now is what are the causative factors that resulted in that? But it doesn't really pertain to this, this is one little piece of land.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any other comments or questions on item 8A6? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
All right, we're on item 8J at this time. And this has to do with the construction of Bus Childers as part of the '07 bond issue. Right. Councilman Shadid and Councilman White, some others.
Councilman Shadid and Councilman White's mothers asked about bus shelters a while back, and can those be funded out of geo-bond issues? And that was a question that we assumed had been no for a number of years. Mr. Wilson Counselor did legal opinion and said that no, that we can do that, with some caveats. A long, a long-listed project. You want to clarify that, councilman?
Yes.
Turn your mic on.
Excuse me. You have that. Let me get that item.
I have it.
Yes, you can do that. Any type of improvement located within the street right-of-way would qualify as a street improvement. So, that's, you're improving the street, the public street right-of-way, which is for the travel of both vehicles and also pedestrians. So, that's why you can do this.
So, when we're doing street widens as part of the bond or other street improvements, we now add sidewalks as part of that? And then, we also have provisions for signage, landscaping, irrigation, street furniture, and street lighting improvements? And we're saying that bus shelters can now be included in the street furniture definition?
Yes.
And so, this is, there's a couple of paths going on here. At the same time, we brought back forth, you and all the council talked with COPPA as to what would be the most likely places to add street shelters. Thirty-one sites were identified to do so. And so, COPPA has a plan. I've written, you got your memo on, and we're on that to get those 31 in place. But at the same time, the Bond Advisory Committee is saying, "Hey, as you go forward, make sure," in this resolution, council, "let's be proactive and add those bus shelters as we go forward." So, that's what this resolution is doing.
Well, I have a question.
So, it's really...
It's one more tool.
I'm sorry.
It's one more tool to finance bus shelters. You've got federal funds, you've got, this is a tool that you could spend $10,000 out of a $5 million street widening project as you're building the sidewalk to incorporate the bus shelter at the same time you're laying down the sidewalk?
Yes.
But the resolution says encourage.
Yes.
You talked about it being stronger than that just a minute ago, if I heard you correctly.
I may have paraphrased.
Okay. But I think, I had a question in my mind. What does encourage mean?
Well, I think it's as, as we are looking at listed projects, we look to see whether or not there are bus routes that are going down that. And if there are, is there a need for bus shelters? And if that, if you're passing those hurdles, then we would look at adding those at that point in time.
And it would have to be locations that COPPA agreed to or felt it was necessary?
Well, legally, probably not, but that would be practically how it would work.
Well, I think it's, it's an interesting resolution, but I think it's got some real hair on it as far as being practical, because it doesn't say what we're going to do or how we're going to do it. It says we're going to encourage it. We just encourage it now that we forget about it, so I don't...
In the same regard, we have a, we have a number of listed projects in the 2007 geo-bond program to do street widening or resurfacing, whatever you want. We need to be careful, do we not, that we have the monies to do that? And if we don't have the money to do the bus shelter, it would be of a lower priority because we've already committed to the voters to do the other widening and/or resurfacing.
That's true, but we'll look at all of those as we go forward.
Just as long as you look at it.
Budget can be an issue. I don't know how big of an issue that's going to be from a practical standpoint, but it could be.
And just a little, I think the procedure we've gone through so far, I mean, I'm one of those that advocated for more bus shelters, and more bus shelters sooner the better. And that process went through COPPA, and they came back with the list of people, and we all...
Working with council.
Working with us, and we all decided on that. I'm satisfied that that's not going to be a cumbersome procedure, that we'll follow what COPPA says. I mean...
And we have a funding source in place, as we reported, for the first 31.
Right.
Some of it, different sources of money coming forth, but...
I wouldn't think we deviate from that plan. They know where they need to go based on ridership and based on...
Well, it's actually, it's a little even easier than that, because as we go forward, if we're going to do a street improvement project, there's going to be a sidewalk that's going to be ADA accessible. That's going to be part of what we're doing. We've already decided that's what we're doing.
You already save some money, we do.
And so, a lot of what we're spending on these 31 is making those bus shelters ADA accessible. So, as we go forward, and they're already ADA accessible, just putting the shelter in will be an easier portion of it than putting in the shelter and making it ADA.
Yeah, I think they've identified the 31 sites, but the problem, they know where 1,000 people are getting on and off in a day, but they don't necessarily all have sidewalks. So, you can't just put a bus shelter in the middle of the grass. So, those, those where you know that as part of the bond, that you're going to be building sidewalks as part of a street widening, that would maybe go to the front of the priority list, because it's, you can do it all at once.
Right. I'm satisfied, though, COPPA, Rick has done such a great job of picking out the places and picking out the routes, that if we put a little more money in, a little more there, we'll get some bang for our buck. And I don't think that this resolution is going to stop that from happening.
And it's really interesting, because we're coordinating this not only with, we've got a couple of things going on here. We've got sidewalks being, that are being put in with bond projects. We've got sidewalks that are being put in with the MAPS III project that are on some of the bus routes. We have sidewalks that are being put in with fund balance that's part, that the city has allocated. And then, COPPA, through Rick and now Jason, have identified some funds that we can fill in the gap, too, to make this happen. So, it's a fairly, it's actually much more complicated than you might think, but it's fairly comprehensive to accommodate ADA accessible and the location of the 31 bus shelter.
Isn't part of, well, is part of this, if we're going to go down this route with all those different mechanisms, for the new transit director, whoever, to sit down with the advertising companies and hammer out how, what kind of agreement we're going to have?
That was approved by COPPA. Mr. Greenwell was there last Friday.
Perfect. Great. Thanks.
Well, I have a question, then. If we adopt this resolution, are we going to put sidewalks on both sides of those streets?
That isn't part of this resolution. But council has already asked us, as we go forward on the next bond issue, that we consider that.
Okay, so the '07 bond issue, we only have it on one side of the street. It might or might, might or might not be on the street where you need the bus shelter on.
Well, as we determine which side of the street, that will be a factor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. We have a motion on item 8J. All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8K, I understand we do not need executive session. How about a motion to move that one forward? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8L, understand we do not need executive session. How about a motion? Second? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8M, I understand we do not need executive session. And we have a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8N, I think we do need executive session. How about a motion to move item 8N to executive session? And a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8O is claims recommended for denial. We have one person who has signed up to speak. Jimmy Rooker. Hey, Jimmy, and we want to know your name and address for the record.
Jimmy Rooker. I live at 10705 Northwest 38th Street in Yukon. I'm here representing 7-Eleven, which is at 2021 South MacArthur. Basically, there was an incident that happened at one of our stores. There was road construction, and I guess when they did it, they backed into one of our security posts and damaged it. We waited to get some of the construction done before we had it repaired. We, I guess, didn't follow proper procedures, I'll admit that, as far as we melded in our claim, and I don't know what happened to it from there. Somewhere in the process, there was a police report filed. I do have a copy of it. Somewhere in there, when we were checking back on it, we found out that there wasn't a report made, and then was told that it was, basically, we waited too late.
All right, let us get some information from our legal staff here. Tina, what can you tell us?
The damage at 7-Eleven is, occurred on November 21 of 2012. The city didn't receive a claim for that damage until January 7 of 2014, well over a year after that November 21st. In order for this claim to be one that we could consider, it would have to have come in by November 22, 2013. They waited until two months later.
Is this state law you're citing?
The statute of limitations for claims against the city requires that the claims be filed within a year of the incident, so this is just filed too late.
So, Jimmy, our problem is that state law doesn't allow us to consider it.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right. That's, my bosses are the ones that sent me down here, so.
I understand.
All rules, you know?
All right, how about a motion then on item 8O?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Claims are denied. And then, item nine is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under item nine? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 10 is items from council, and the first one's from Councilman Shadid. Ed?
So, this, I'm not looking for a vote today. This is just a rough draft. I asked Kenny to put together a rough draft. I haven't even responded to his, the way he wrote it, and obviously, the rest of the council hasn't either. I was talking with Councilman White about, I guess, back in previous years, used to refer things like this to a judiciary committee and just kind of vet it within a committee, and then try and bring a resolution forward. And we don't obviously do that anymore, but this might be something to consider, something like that. Basically, I'm just looking for us to bring different policies into alignment, because it seems like we're all over the board in terms of gifts and what's allowed, what's not allowed. We do have in our charter language about, that's very, very stern, about accepting anything of value from franchisees. So, if I were to accept two tickets, two theater tickets from OG&E or ONG or Cox because they're franchisees, the penalty would be that I would be removed from the council. On the other hand, I could accept presumably unlimited number of theater tickets from any contractor with the city, would never have to disclose it, and there would be no penalty whatsoever. Somebody could fly me wherever, fly me to, give me whatever gifts, and that would be acceptable, but just a couple of theater tickets from a franchisee, and I would lose my council seat. I mean, it just seems so wildly disproportionate. And then, we have a complimentary ticket policy that came about in 2002, long before the Thunder came. Then the Thunder came, and now it's possible for me to utilize a couple of tickets, you know, dozens and dozens of times in a year that may be worth double my council salary. And the reason outlined for this public expenditure of funds is that I'm overseeing the management, operation, and maintenance of the city facility, and that the reason I need to have a second ticket is that it's entirely unreasonable to expect me to dedicate my leisure time to public function oversight duties without at least one person accompanying me. So, it's entirely unreasonable for me to ever go and do public oversight by myself. I need to have somebody else with me. It just, it just doesn't seem coherent. It seems wildly disproportionate in terms of what's allowed here and what's allowed there. And so, I'm asking just for, I guess, for everyone to give Kenny their thoughts. There are things in here that really are just Kenny. These are not my thoughts about how to define a gift. He came up with a $100 amount. There's the question of whether you would just go forward or retroactively disclose gifts in the past, and I would just look for direction and everybody to, either this could be, I don't know if it even could be referred to like a judiciary committee for some kind of recommendation, or just everybody gives Kenny thoughts, and then we try and come up with some cohesive policy.
Okay. Pete?
Let me come in on the judiciary committee. Ed called me, and we talked about that. And I said that back in the 80s, we, the judiciary committee was kind of a catch-all. It hadn't been since then, and I'm the chairman up, so I'm not advocating it to be assigned to my committee, if I don't misunderstand. But that's how we did, when we had issues like this, we'd just refer them to a committee, and generally, that standing committee was the judiciary committee. And we'd hold meetings, and everybody on the council came if they wanted to, and everybody on the council had a vote at the committee if they wanted to vote. And it was just kind of a way of hashing out these kind of things. So, I just wanted, by way of explanation, explain how that, Jim probably remembers that system. That was, that was very prevalent, probably, well, it was prevalent 20 years ago. It's how we did those kind of things. We didn't form special committees. We just had a catch-all committee, and that was it. And we sent up there and had kind of a hearing on it, kind of like the, the Congress does that. That's the way Congress does. They just have those catch-all committees, where you, whatever's controversial, you send them down there and let people talk about it. So, I just wanted to be clear that...
Okay. Well, why don't we just all give Kenny our comments, then? Kenny loves that, I guess.
Here, I'll take whatever comments you have.
All right, that sounds good. Ed, thanks. Item 10B comes to us from...
What's the action? Is it going to be stricken, or are we deferring it?
Differ or stricken, Mr. Shadid.
Well, I guess this ordinance would just be struck, and perhaps brought back another time, rewritten.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just strike this ordinance. All right, item 10B, Councilman Ryan?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is just a follow-up on some instances that have occurred in Ward 8, where we have a natural waterway that's used as part of a drainage facility, and the developer needs that to the homeowners' association. And they are, the homeowners' association, according to the plat, are responsible for the maintenance of that facility. And in a lot of instances, the homeowners aren't aware of that, and that people who buy houses aren't aware of the fact that they are buying a responsibility to maintain this beautiful stream behind their house. And I think this is just one effort to make the homeowners' association and the homeowners who buy houses out there aware of the fact that they have responsibility.
And you have further asked that we develop standards that could be provided.
That was the second question I asked the manager, if we could develop some standards in public works to what that maintenance included. For instance, if we want them to keep the grass cut at a certain level, we don't want certain structures built in it, permanent facilities, that sort of thing. I think the homeowners' association needs to be aware of the fact. I've had two examples in my ward in the nine years I've been in the council, where the homeowners weren't aware of the fact that they owned this facility, and they didn't pay tax on it, and it was sold in a tax sale. We have testers from way outside the state who just bought this property very cheap on the come, and they own it now, and they're not willing to take any responsibility for the maintenance of it. And they usually let it go back, and eventually, the homeowners' association gets it back.
And unfortunately, in these situations, sometimes the problems don't, aren't in that subdivision. In other words, if they don't keep it cleared, they become overgrown, the water can't pass to their subdivision, but it backs up into the subdivision next door. And so, oftentimes, you get issues with far-ranging effects of this that affect other neighborhoods.
But I think it's just a step, hopefully, that will make people aware of the fact that there's a responsibility the homeowners' association has to maintain that facility. And then, secondly, the individual homeowner who buys out there understands that that drainage facility behind his house is, belongs to him. It's not the city's responsibility out there cleaning it out, put them walls to keep the erosion, we heard about this morning.
So, you've had a lot of experience with homeowners, the actual board members not being aware of it, too?
James, the problem I've run into is the lack of communication between the developer and the homeowners' association who takes over the property. Sometimes, they don't know what they've taken over, what they signed, what they received from the developer.
Okay.
And so, if there's anything we can do to make them aware of the fact that there is a problem out there, potential problem, I think we got it.
Okay. All right.
I'm moving on. Second.
All right, comments or questions then on item 10B? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 10C comes to us jointly from Councilman McAtee and Councilwoman Sawyer. And it has to do with vacant and abandoned properties.
Actually, it's a staff-initiated. We're trying to get a group of staff and community volunteers and council to go to this program regarding vacant and abandoned properties, where we, this has been a huge attention of council over the last several months, and we're trying to get people more educated in what can be done and how to administer these types of...
I see. And so, the notation to them is that they would be two of the company, this larger group.
Those are the two designated groups. I have a question. How does this fit in with the proposed legislation out of the state Capitol that would prohibit the municipalities from doing this personally?
Well, that would be a problem. It goes right in with our legislation. If it's well with, it tails into our legislation, the legislation that would prohibit us from doing this, obviously, would be a problem. But, I mean, I don't, I'm not convinced at this time that that's going to pass.
Okay.
Do we, I understand the council is going, and I know that we already approved it, but we're also paying for Leonard Sullivan and Nels Peterson to go?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
What, why are we paying for the county assessors' travel?
Because we're trying to put together a community group. We want them to be knowledgeable and available. A lot of this may fall back onto the assessor's office as they administer our vacant and abandoned issues.
Was there any thought given to sending somebody from the state legislature along?
We're pretty well following the guidelines of the program that's provided to us. I understand. I think.
Okay. Yeah, Larry?
Hey, let me clear something up that Councilman White was quite concerned over. I really don't want to go because this is at Harvard. And a Princeton man does not really want to go to Harvard. So this is not any kind of an enjoyable trip for me.
You're taking one.
I'm taking one for the team because there, there is a, a team that's been put together that does include a representative from the, from the realty industry. There's also some, Leonard Sullivan, who is vitally interested in this because it affects his collections. And we were affected by this because this is a result, I think this is the reason we were selected, was because we did hire a consultant a number of months ago. That consultant did put together a three-step recommendation on how to address vacant properties. And so rightly or wrongly, we've been judged as being on the forefront of being interested in trying to solve this problem on a national basis. And so that's the justification behind it. Pat, if you don't want to, if you don't want to approve this, you'll make my day hard. I'll stand up and sing the Princeton alma mater for you, all right?
It's more of a threat than it is a promise. No, I had, my, I had no real objection to this enterprise. It seems like a boondoggle. But it seems like we ought to invite some representatives and senators who are interested in passing this sort of legislation that would prohibit the municipalities from getting in, if we really wanted some public input that might be-
Yeah. All right. Somebody make a motion on item 10C. Cast your votes. And it passes 8-1. All right, item D and E comes to us from the council and have to do with the, the ownership and potential sale of a rail line that's between Oklahoma City and Tulsa. And we have, I'm going to characterize, one has a little bit stronger language than the other. One is brought to us from Councilman White in Greenwell and the other one is brought to us from Councilman McAtee. I think we probably ought to start to have some discussion and then wherever it seems there's more sentiment, perhaps we vote on that one first. And if that one passes, then we don't need to vote on the other one. Fair enough? All right. Councilman White, Greenwell, do you want to discuss your? Yeah, go ahead.
This resolution that's been put forward has been passed in this exact form, except for changing our name, by the city of Tulsa. It was not signed by the mayor, but it was passed by the council unanimously. It was passed by the city council of Sepulpa, the city council of Bristow. It is on the agenda tonight at Norman. And I've had some conversations with, with people in Mayor Rosenthal's office. And she says, and their word is there, that they expect it to pass unanimously in Norman. The, I, it is, it is strongly worded, but I, I think, I think it is important that it be this strongly worded. I think it is not, is not something that we can leave out there and then hope it's going to work out in the future. I think we've got to stand up for what I think Oklahoma City's long-term best interest is. And that is to keep that rail line in the, in the public hands so that we, I could go into a lot of details about why, but I think, I, I don't think transferring it to a company that primarily wants to use it for freight. And I, I did meet with BNSF and they indicated perfect willingness to, to institute whatever passenger transportation we want, of course, if we're willing to pay for all of it. And, and they operate some other passenger services around the country. But they're very, very expensive and, and I don't think, I think a, a partnership between the cities and, and the private sector, the smaller railroads is probably more likely to be successful than one that is just going to be done on a contract basis where we, we put up all the money and somebody else operates for it. So I, I, I would not want to amend this because it's been passed in this identical form by three other bodies and probably a fourth will pass it tonight.
Okay. David, you want to say anything further?
No, thank you.
Okay. And then on count, on item E. Larry, you want to discuss item E?
Yeah. From the time that Tulsa passed their ordinance, the announcement was made that BNSF and WATCO were chosen to negotiate with the state for the purchase of the Sooner Sub Line. So things have changed since the initial resolution by Tulsa. I happen to have a different perspective on it. I think the goal here is not to determine who should own this property, but what strategy will be the best to have passenger traffic between Tulsa and Oklahoma City in the future. The goal should not be ownership of the rail line. The goal should be, how do we get passenger traffic that is economical, efficient, and meets the needs of both communities? That being said, I frankly am not smart enough to figure out today whether that is best handled by the state owning it or the prop, the, the private railroads owning it. So my resolution just says, hey, Department of Transportation, in evaluating the proposals that are before you, please put first on your priority list the development of passenger travel that will be economical and efficient between these two parties. I have, quite frankly, more confidence in the Department of Transportation than maybe some, some other people do. I've seen them at work. I've seen them at work at the Morgan Road Interchange under, and Gary Ridley is no longer the director out there. But I've seen how they work to resolve problems that benefit the citizens of Oklahoma City. And so that's the thrust of mine. Let's emphasize the need for passenger travel, but let's leave the experts decide who should own it and how should that be developed. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yeah. Yeah, just listening to Larry, I don't know that I disagree, but I think, Pete, what you're saying is the advantage of, of yours is that it's identical to what these other cities have already done and there's a consistency to it.
I mean, we don't have any way to control what ODOT does. They're going, as we've seen in the past, they're going to do what they, what they choose to do. I do think that they are, and I would agree with this part, they are susceptible to public pressure. There's no question about it. We wouldn't have the boulevard design now that, that exists now had they, were they not susceptible to some public pressure. We've got a better design because of the process we went through. I think this is just keeping that pressure up, really. They're going, this, we don't have any right to tell ODOT what to do, but we have, we have a right to tell them what we think. And that's what, I think that's what this is about. Because I'm, I'm just convinced that, and I've said this before, and there is a difference between how, how Larry feels about ODOT's investment in transportation and the way I feel. Obviously, I think they're very heavily invested in asphalt transportation and not very heavily invested in rail transportation. And that's just a difference of opinion. But I, I'd like to keep the, the situation as fluid as possible so that we have as a maximum, we, I wouldn't want to let any opportunity to influence the outcome go, go without us trying to do what we can.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak?
Well, yeah, I think ODOT's history, I mean, is, is a factor in, of almost going out of their way to preclude future rail development and, and alternative modes of transportation that might compete with highways and automobile. But one question I would have is what, what is the state of purpose? The state obtained the rail line from BNSF in the past and now BNSF wants it back?
A different line. There was, it was a different line that was, was abandoned.
What's the stated reason that BNSF and WATCO want the line from the state?
Haven't seen the proposals, sir. Proposals are, been submitted to, to ODOT and we haven't, haven't not seen those.
As to what they're going to do with it? But certainly the rumors are that it's heavily oil and gas.
Oh, I, I would guess that to be true, yes.
I think they're both gambling on, to some extent, on the fact that Keystone Pipeline may not be ever approved and it's going to be the best way to move.
If I could provide just a little bit of history on that. There were a number of rail lines from small operators that from the sixties to the nineties, Councilman White knows a lot more about the history of railroads than I will ever know. But there were a lot of those that were abandoned. And instead of having that right-of-way go, be cut up and go into disrepair, the state took stewardship of those to hold that right-of-way intact for a future higher and better use for it. And so that's what they were doing. They, they took it in more of a holding pattern was their, was their policy thought. And so, which they did, and they held it just not, not dissimilar to what COF is doing on holding some right-of-way for some, some railroad. So that was the intent. They were, it was, they were, the interests of the, of the railroads, they, they went belly up, whatever happened at that point in time. And there were generally reversionary clauses in those railroads. I think they went back to the state and so the state held them in stewardship for, for future options.
Do, do we know if they were, if it was for heavy oil and gas freight, what that would potentially mean for passenger rail? If BNSF and WATCO were successful in obtaining it?
I, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. I, you know, trains coexist, but clearly, I mean, from BNSF, from the, you know, Amtrak is on a BNSF line that goes down, down to Fort Worth. Now, I'm not saying that Amtrak is, is a great example. I'm pleased that we have that rail service. I think that, that adds some depth to Oklahoma City. But there's clearly example after example where, where commercial freight and passenger rail coexist. I mean, there's example after example of that. Is that optimum? I can't answer that, Councilman.
Okay. Jane?
First of all, I don't have a problem with either one of these resolutions. But just from my own personal view, I'm quite a big skeptic of passenger rail ever being feasible. And the main reason that, main, main reason for me thinking that is because I view it from a customer standpoint. And right now, I can go from the west side of Oklahoma City to Tulsa in two hours and it'd be pretty cheap. Whereas if we're riding on rail, it's going to take longer and it's going to cost more. And so for me, and really with no, no traffic problems. So, I mean, I understand that, you know, the studies that we've done and, and those sorts of things show that passenger rail is an important part of future transportation options. I don't really see really the evidence of why we think that. But, but there's people that are a lot smarter than I am about, about transportation.
Quit the common sense into our discussion.
But they've got it, they've got to prove it, they've got to prove it to me. You know, because when I, when I think of trains and rail, I, I think backwards. I mean, that's, that's old.
Did you go to the church?
No. That's old technology. You know, if we're talking about transportation, I'd like to be going forward and thinking, you know, not even on the ground sort of stuff. You know, I don't know. That, that's kind of, that's just kind of my personal view. I don't have any problem with the ODOT, you know, promoting it and, and trying to figure out how to make it efficient. I think that's, I think that's fine, so.
Okay.
James, I was just going to say I grew up riding trains. And by inference, that makes me old. So I'm really not so keen on that comment anymore.
That is not what I was inferring.
Yeah. I'm in favor of the stronger of these two resolutions. I think we just ought to mirror what our sister cities have done. And I think I agree with Pete. I don't think we have much influence on ODOT, but maybe we have a little. So that would be my position.
All right. We also have four people that have signed up to speak on this item. And where I sense we're heading is a, is to vote on item, Councilman White and Greenwell's motion. And I suspect there's the sentiment to pass it. If you still want to speak, you're welcome to.
Okay, Glenn Nead, 73-
I'm going to, I'm going to give each speaker three minutes, maximum.
7300 North Post Road, Ward 7. Okay. I strongly urge the adoption of Honorable White's and Greenwell's resolution. Oklahoma needs alternative trans, alternative means of transportation. Passenger rail, passenger rail is, is an alternative. This will provide a line between Oklahoma City joining Tulsa with a long Bristow and Stroud with opportunities to go elsewhere. Let's see. I live one half mile north of Sooner Sub on Post Road. And I have watched the improvements that WATCO has put into that line since it's been abandoned by BNSF and that Oklahoma, state of Oklahoma has wisely picked up to, from the abandonment. I am opposed to the sale. By selling the line, Oklahoma, the state of Oklahoma will be squandering 12% of the profits of that oil that will be going across that line. And depending upon who the buyer is, will severely hamper the prospects of passenger rail on that line. Sir, you talked about going backwards with train. Tell that to Utah. Our friends in Utah have a direct, have a brand new line, profitable line going between Salt Lake City and Ogden. As you know, Ogden is a home of Hill Air Force Base, a comp, a competitor to Tinker Air Force Base. We have nothing in place, anything like that. By not looking at this, we're being very short-sighted. Thank you, Your Honors.
Thank you, Glenn. Edwin Kessler?
I, I currently live at 800 Canadian Trails Drive in Norman. And I want to speak briefly about the lack of transportation for the public in Oklahoma. I think that Oklahoma is far behind several other cities. For example, Dallas, which has a well-used local train service. And Salt Lake City, which runs 60 trains. It's hard to believe, as many as 60 trains a day, which are well-populated. And I think Dallas is the closest city that has extensive rail service for the public. I think that's close to everything I need to say. I should also point out that I have a hearing impediment, so I did not hear everything. I did not understand everything that was said by the council. Oklahoma is far behind. And it's part of the reason for that is the lack of the city council affirmation of the need for public transportation in Oklahoma. This city council could pass a resolution which affirms the need for public transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Mary Frances?
Thank you, Mayor and city council members. I'm Mary Frances, 850C, Cardinal Craig, Norman. And I'm here because of Resolution D, which speaks very specifically to a problem that I see. The proposed sale by the Department of Transportation of 97 miles of state-owned property from Oklahoma to Sepulpa. If allowed, this sale would effectively diminish, if not kill, Oklahoma City's ability to obtain passenger rail service for its citizens, as well as all of the smaller cities between Oklahoma and Tulsa, not just Bristow and Sepulpa and Stroud, but the other little cities where you drive five miles and catch the train or 10 miles and catch the train. They'll be served too, all of the cities between Oklahoma City and Tulsa or Sepulpa. Norman and Edmund and all of the other surrounding communities here will have a stake also in this issue. in this issue. Resolution C, Resolution D clearly, clearly addresses this problem, whereas the other resolution does not. And negotiating easements, right-of-ways, or other contracts in which you have no ownership is quite often very difficult and expensive. And it will be very expensive for the state if we don't own that property. And yet, once the property and right-of-way are secured, it's rather foolish to give it up. You're essentially giving away any possibility of influence or control of that property. 97 miles. Currently, the state of Oklahoma has not only the ownership and control of the railroad and the right-of-way from Oklahoma City to Sepulpa. We also have a 99-year lease at $9 a mile, a rail mile, very cheap. It'll go up to over 30 if we don't exercise that one, for the remaining 15 to 18 miles into Tulsa. A 99-year lease, and that will go away if the sale is made. Polls show that Oklahomans want passenger rail. I'm old. You guys are going to get old. You know? You don't want me on the highways. You don't want our 80- and 90-year-olds out there on the highways. But you do want disabled vets to have a way to get around this state. You do want us to have a way to get around. I have been up to Tulsa just recently to do the theater again. This is the sixth time I've been to the same play, because it's wonderful. There are wonderful folk in Tulsa who would love to come down to the Thunder Games. I mean, this is a marvelous opportunity. Don't let it get away. Don't let it get away by letting the railroad and our ownership get away.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Tony Wangler?
Mayor, other esteemed members of the council, thank you. Again, my name is Tony Wangler. That's spelled W-A-N-G-L-E-R. Having twice been elected to serve on our council, the city of Spencer have an understanding of some of your duties before you. I can't add to what all these other people have said, other than say, I encourage you to vote for the resolution on D, and Mr. Reiner defeat E. Okay. I think it really will be beneficial to the city of Oklahoma City if we can get passenger rail service established in here in this city again. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Tony.
Ms. Sawyer?
All right. Pete, would you like to make a motion on D?
I'm going to vote on D.
All right. We have a motion in a second. We're voting on item 8D. It passes unanimously. Larry, okay if we strike item E?
Yes.
All right. Just making it official.
I can count.
Onto the city manager reports?
Item 10.
Oh, items from council, let's start going around. Pat, you have anything for us today?
Nothing, Your Honors.
Okay. John?
No.
Meg?
No.
All right, David?
Okay.
All right, Pete? Larry? Ed? Jay?
Wow.
Well, we haven't got the citizens to be heard yet. That's all right.
Yeah. I want to do all of the city manager reports. The February sales and use tax flexion report was discussed at the workshop we had a couple of weeks ago. It was the strongest check we've had in a while. It was 3.8%. Our economist says those are going to continue. I hope he's right. I'll have to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions on city manager reports to the city manager?
Going back to Mr. Kaus's comment about the economists, I think his forecast, 4.25% to 6%, is very optimistic. When was the last time we had a 4% increase in sales tax?
We've had 10. 10 and 11, probably both were that high. I mean, we were coming out of recession at that time, so you've got, but we had a couple of years in there. That was, we were over that.
Over what, 4%?
Yes, sir.
We had a high of 6%?
I think so.
Thank you.
All right, citizens to be heard. Teddy Blalock. Ask each citizen, listener, or citizen to be heard to please keep their comments to three minutes or less. Teddy, we will need your name and address for the record, please.
You got it written down.
I'll need you to state it for the record, please.
2415 Northwest 3rd. Okay. The problem I have with the city council, and the city councils behind all this going on around town, is where y'all harass, y'all tell numerous stories to the police department, and the police department goes around and harasses all the homeless. Y'all know that, and you especially know it. Because why do you think all these homeless is out on the street for? Because what the city does to the people lives on the street. Y'all don't care about the homeless. That's why the police department's out there harassing people. Now, if I was going to vote for a new governor to be sitting right there, because I heard enough on the TV and the radio lately, and a lot of business people I know around town, why do you think there's all these businesses around Oklahoma City is moving to Texas? Because you're Oklahoma City finest, harassing the homeless, harassing their business, harassing their customers. Everybody around Oklahoma City knows this. As an old friend of mine told me years ago, the city council don't care about nobody except themselves and the rich people. And I'll give you a little, what's your name, ma'am?
My name is Meg Sawyer.
Okay. Especially to you. How would you feel if you was walking down the street, going from the grocery store to home, and the police officer harasses you? How would you feel?
Mr. Blalock, you're not here to ask questions to the council.
Well, I've gone here to say my piece.
And we're listening.
And I want my answer. How would you feel?
Mr. Blalock, you're not here to ask questions.
Well, you got it.
You're welcome to speak to council.
That's what's going on around Oklahoma City, is you're Oklahoma City finest. As an old saying goes, your doughnut boys sits around at these coffee shops, drink coffee, eat donuts. Then they go out and harass anybody they want to see walking down the road or riding a bicycle down the road. Go over here, Third and Virginia over here, the Homeless Alliance.
Mr. Blalock, you're out of time. Is there a thing you'd like to say in summing up your comments?
Y'all need to straighten y'all's act.
Thank you for coming down.
And you got my vote, not yours.
Michael Hinton?
Thank you, Your Honor and council. So good to be back in your mission. I am Michael Hinton, 333 Northwest 5th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73102. And, Your Honor and council, I come to share with all of you my reflections on the recent meeting we had at the Santa Fe Rail Station, and that I was overjoyed to learn and hear what is being done in the restoration of the Santa Fe Rail Station here in Oklahoma City, and efforts to bring back Amtrak train service that has been long since lost. Your Honor and council, I come forward to salute you folks in your efforts to restore some of the splendor that was destroyed by neglect and stupidity from way out of the past through no fault of your own. Peace be with all of you folks, and I thank you for allowing me this moment to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right, we have executive session, and we'll be back.